Thank you so much. Welcome to the, oh, what's the date? December 4th. Welcome to the December 4th meeting of the Norfolk Select Board in accordance with the provisions from Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Notices hereby given that the Select Board will meet on Tuesday, Thursday, so sorry, December 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting or by remote Zoom connection. Please note that in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. If attending remotely, please sign in using your first and last name to request to ask a question or provide comment, though that won't be appropriate this evening. Please use the raise hand feature available when you click on your name, and the chair will address the request. Please be advised that this meeting will be audio. Thank you for putting that there, Amanda. Please be advised that this meeting will be audio and video recorded for future rebroadcast by the Norfolk Community Television. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, and thank you. I thought there'd be more people here, but I'm very, very glad for the people that are here. Tonight is an important meeting. It's a very important night for this board. We're making probably the most important decision that we will make as a board. And as you will hear from Bob and Buzz, a great deal of thought and intention and community participation has gone into this process to date. Before we begin, I would like to review the agenda and expectations for this evening. We will be interviewing three candidates, one at a time. Following the interviews, the board will deliberate and hopefully make a decision. As it is a long evening, we will have at least one very short break, and during the break, we will not discuss the candidates. Attendees, we're very, very glad for your interest and for your being here, but I want to remind you that you're here as observers. And while by law this is an open meeting, these interviews and the deliberation that follows are not participatory events. We have even put our cell phones, oh, we should put our cell phones. I'm going to give mine to Amanda. We'll put our cell phones away. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
I forgot to do that beforehand. We'll put our cell phones away so there are no opportunities for outside influence. This decision is the responsibility of this board, and these are professional interviews, so we expect that there will be no clapping or booing or any of those kind of things. Please do not disrupt the interview process. As elected representatives of our community, we have an obligation to move into this evening with open minds and hearts. We have each reviewed the materials and have prepared questions. We look forward to meeting and getting to know the candidates. And just as a final thing, the folks being interviewed today are real people with real families, real jobs, and real lives. They have moved through an intense screening process and risen to the top. I would encourage everyone watching here and at home to remember that by participating, they are placing trust in our community. Let's live up to that trust, especially if feeling compelled to discuss folks online. Thank you very much. And I'm going to turn it over to Bob from MRI, who started the process for us.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you to the board members, first of all, for engaging us to conduct this process. It was a very interesting, invigorating process. You appointed a very interesting town administrative screening committee who were all very engaged in our process. And I know Kristen's here, and she regrets the day that they nominated me to be the chair, but they were very involved in our process. And I'll walk through a little bit of that and how many meetings we had with them and how they went through the process with us. As you know, you received 37 candidates, which was good in our mind. It's a very competitive environment out there. You've probably seen towns around you who have recently hired some folks. In fact, we lost one of our finalist candidates in the last week or so. So it's a very, very challenging time for municipal government, but overall, we liked the candidates you received. And you remember the memo we sent you. They came from a lot of different places, majority from Massachusetts. But we had some highly qualified folks from out of Massachusetts that did not get through the screening, because as you know, we went through a process with you folks. We asked you what you're looking for. What candidate has the type of qualities that will succeed here in Norfolk? We talked a lot about stabilizing the situation here in Norfolk. And we took that into account as we were reviewing the candidates. Are they jumpers? Do they jump around? Do they commit to the community they're in? So anyhow, all of that was part of the evaluative process. We met with your screening committee. First of all, we advertised, obviously, in six regional areas, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Vermont, all of New England states, and the ICMA, which is the International City Managers. It's a professional association for town managers. We got responses from that. As you can tell, we got places from out of states, out of New England. People see it, and they apply. So we went through that process. That ended at the end of September, when we advertised for 30 days. During that advertising period, we talked to all three of you. We talked to a number of your department managers. I came out here for a day. Buzz did some phone discussions, including the school side. So we talked to everybody to try to get a perspective on the community, and that was all developed and put into our profile and challenge statement that you see and you posted, which included the challenges that's the town, not the only challenges, but the challenges that are out there that you guys face every day. And the profile, we tried to determine the perfect candidate, a perfect candidate is the wrong term, but the right candidate for you folks, based on everything we heard. And we heard a lot. I can tell you that from the three of you and from all of your department managers. We heard a lot, and a lot of varying opinions on the type of individual who will succeed here. And with all of that information, Buzz and I scored the resumes. We looked at the candidates that applied. Who met the criteria? Not a lot didn't, and we just eliminated those. Ultimately, it came down to 10 people we thought met the criteria, brought them to Kristen and the screening committee, and ultimately, they narrowed that down to seven people that we thought we wanted to talk to. And ultimately, they decided to interview five individuals, which is what we did. Coming out of that, I think originally, Chris, we had four that you thought should be interviewed, and unfortunately, as I mentioned, we lost one just this past weekend. So that's how we got here today. It was a very transparent process with us. You know, there was, there's no favoritism involved in any of this. That's why I think you engaged us, so we can kind of cull through that and make sure that we get the best people that you can interview to talk about going forward for Norfolk. And Chris, you want to just add to that a little bit?
Come on up.
Are you interviewing for the position tonight?
No. Hello, I did not know I'd be speaking, so I know I submitted a letter on behalf of our committee. There were six of us from the general public that you selected to do this process. We all got along great, despite the fact that we probably have all been on different sides of the aisle on things in town over the years. I really enjoyed it, so I thank you all for giving us that opportunity, and I hope they all did as well. We did a pretty thorough process. We are not an easy group. I think we were pretty critical and thoughtful about who we talked to and what we asked them. And I do feel like these three people could all do this job, and that's why we've put them forward. I think the question we wanted to make sure you guys thought about was who would be most successful for Norfolk specifically at this point in time. So I would say, and I think the group would agree, that we gave you a pretty diverse slate of candidates. I believe all three are pretty different and bring different strengths to this role if they were in it. And so really, it's about what you guys know about what people have been asking for and what the town's looking for, and figuring out which person will be the right person for us right now. All these people are great. They may not be the right fit for us today, or they might, you know, have something we need, but we think they're all really great candidates, and we hope you have as fun interviewing them as we did. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to just thank you and your committee for the work that you've done, and I think that adding that community piece into the process just lifts everything up. And so we're really grateful for the time and energy and intention that you've put into that work, and thank you so much.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
When you're ready.
We're ready. I think we're ready. Are you ready?
Ready.
We're ready.
You've seen his materials. He's a recent town administrator out of Harwich, Massachusetts. Joe, you're over this one.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening. Good evening. Just to introduce ourselves, I'm Anita Mecklenburg. I'm the chair, and this is Kevin Roach, who is the vice chair, and Tyce Hickman, who is our clerk.
Next one, thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm just going to ask you to start us off by bringing your resume to life a little bit for us, just briefly bring it to life, but include in that specifically what draws you to Norfolk.
Certainly, thank you. Let me get my digital notebook here if I could. Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity. I enjoy this process almost as much as I enjoy town meeting, and I love town meeting, and that's one of the things that motivates me about the job. So I'm thrilled to be able to make it to the finals, and I appreciated the time with your screening committee. And I appreciate the way you worded it, Madam Chair. I'm always focused on, you know, I'm trying to condense 30-plus years in municipal government, sworn in on my 21st birthday, if anyone wants to do the math, way back in 1989. And so you really can't capture that on a resume. And I also want to be upfront, you know, whatever Google has, if you will, so the internet. So I think it's important, as we get to know each other, for me to try to fill in the blanks as much as I can on all that. So what brings me to Norfolk is Norfolk itself, is the opportunity to serve in a town that has a similar size and scope as the one I just left. It has an open town meeting, which I'm a big fan of. And so, you know, what you'll see in my resume, I think, is hopefully is someone that has an accomplished career in municipal government. And, you know, I look forward to talking about this evening by answering some of your questions, some of the successes that I've had, some of the successes I've been a part of, and certainly some of the failures that have been out there. And I think unfortunately, when you, if you just rely on the internet, you're going to get a flavor of failures or wrongdoing. So I'd like to dive in if I could, so, because it's, I never had been in the habit of watching myself on TV, and I've never been in the habit of looking at myself on the internet. And so I think, you know, to sort of go chronologically, born and raised in the town of Braintree, is where I cut my teeth, is where I served as a school committee member, select board member, town clerk, moderator, and really where I developed my love for government. When you Google me, you'll see something that says that I was placed on leave back in 2014. And to this day, it's always going to frustrate me. What's not there is the reason why. I was on family medical leave to take care of a family member that was dealing with cancer. That's not to say that there weren't disagreements and things like that there, you know, 47 years in the town, born and raised, you're going to have your history, if you will. But it doesn't tell the story of, you know, what was going on then, and it was, the conclusion of which is what led me to Cape Cod for a chance to be the first standalone town clerk in the history of Wellfleet, a position that I loved and I thought would never leave. And that eventually brought me to my next hometown, which was Harwich. Now, when I got to Harwich, I broke my golden rule. I said, I don't want to live and work in the same town. You folks know that better than anybody. When you go to the supermarket, you're on. You know, if you're at the bank, you're on. No matter what it is, you're always on. But it was the best opportunity for me at the time, for me and my family, and really where I think I have the greatest examples of success and ability. And the one thing that I consider my colossal failure, and if anyone Googles that, you'll see the Affordable Housing Trust. I think there may have been committee members here from the screening committee. I told them, as a government geek who loves parliamentary procedure and Robert's Rules of Order, that was a colossal failure because I broke all the rules of a presiding officer. I have my side of the story, if you will, but it doesn't matter. I want to present to you tonight as a leader who can accomplish things here in Norfolk going forward and immediately. And being part of a leader is owning the mistakes that you made, although again, I don't refer to that incident as a mistake. That's a failure. You know, a mistake is if I messed up on the warrant or an error in judgment, and that was just a bad conversation that I should have done better on. However, as we get into the conversation of the resume and what it is you folks are looking for and what I think I can bring, I also want to put out there that I'm looking in Norfolk for what I think you're looking for. I'm looking for stability. I'm looking for, I'll say, my last job, but I don't want you to think it's my last contract. I've done the things that I've done. I've accomplished the things I've accomplished. I'm looking to offer the skills and abilities that I can bring on finance, on governance, on success at town meeting for your town. And I do want to do all that for personal reasons. I went to the Cape because it was the best opportunity for my family, and now the best opportunity for me is to be off Cape. I am blessed to still have my parents. They live in Braintree still. They're my, I'm their primary person, if you will, and my life is coming off Cape now. I'm in a committed relationship. I don't like to say boyfriend-girlfriend because I'm too old for that, but I've been in a committed relationship for six years, Holly's in Attleboro. And so I've been judicious over the last two years of looking for communities where I know I can add value, but where I think I'll be valued. So I hope I've covered some of that. I guess I would summarize by saying, I will never not answer questions. I will never shirk from anything because I pride myself on being a leader, but a leader in municipal government. And so, you know, we can talk tonight about exciting things like wastewater investment and infrastructure investment funds, which I think can be helpful, certainly wastewater projects, which I have a lot of experience with, but also helping out with, you know, getting stronger with the budget. And I also think there's a path for you folks to get to a AAA bond rating, which I think is critical for a town like Norfolk going forward, and I have experience in that. So hopefully, I've touched upon a lot of the questions, but also some of the successes and stimulated conversation.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Want to ask?
Sure. Thank you for taking accountability for some of the mistakes and failures. I think that's important as a leader to be able to do, so I appreciate you sharing that with us. I have a question about, you mentioned, you know, your experience in finance. So Norfolk has been relying on free cash to balance our operating budget, which is obviously unsustainable. So in your first 90 days, how would you evaluate and correct this while maintaining service levels and protecting the town's double-A bond rating?
Well, I don't know that I can do it in the first 90 days. However, it's the first order of business. When I talked to your screening committee, I had mentioned that you folks were using those one-time funds, and I hope I didn't come across as critical because, you know, reading your warrant, your advisory committee, I think, had a very legitimate representation, went back to you folks on it. So for me, yep, we want to keep free cash out of the operating budget. We want to be able to sustain the operating budget without getting too much reliance upon the levy. When I talk about our two communities, Harwich and Norfolk have a lot of similar demographics, size-wise, complexities of tax base and all that. But I told the screening committee, when you develop a budget on the Cape, there is no such thing as local aid. And the first time I had to deal with that is Department Ed in Wellfleet. I was done by that. And when I say no local aid, I mean you pay out more to the state in assessments than you get back in local aid. So we don't even have local aid as an option. You folks do. But what it requires us to do on the Cape is to be more creative about local receipts and other available funds. So I think what I would do, you know, working with your finance team, it's about forecasting, it's about understanding, you know, where we are in the, I think you have 152 days till town meeting, so we're under the gun. I think the answer that I'll land on is, in the first 90 days, we're going to have to do a deep dive on what else could be out there in local receipts, what else could be out there in sustaining the budget, what other, are there grants that we can use? Not that grants are any better than the one-time fund, but I think really trying to get away from just the reliance on the levy and looking at other available receipts and sources. And so, you know, what I'm mindful of is it's 152 days till town meeting. I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. I also don't want to set up expectations. You know, when you have that instability in your operating budget, it's not something that can get fixed overnight, but it's something that we need to accomplish. So one of the things I did for budgeting is not so much just on the revenue or the sources, if you will, is establishing a secondary process for the budget of enhancement of services. So we're going to start out wherever your budget's at, assuming it's still fully funded and sustainable, and that becomes our service level going forward. Not level fund, because I think that really constitutes a reduction, but looking at, okay, understanding the fixed costs that we're going into in '27, what are the programs that we want to add to, and where are the savings that can come down to it? You know, I talked with the screening committee about, there may be some low-hanging fruit, if you will, training and development. I'm a big believer in association memberships and all of that, but those are things we might be able to do in-house and cheaper. And so I can't give you the magic bullet tonight, but I can tell you that when you're on the Cape and you're seasonal and you don't have the state aid, you find ways to do it. And so I'd want to dig into all of the available funds outside of the levy.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to change gears a little bit. So the, in your current job, can you just tell me three words that people would use to describe you?
Goofy came to mind. As I said, I was telling your screening committee about my love of parliamentary procedure, so, but I think the last, well, the last is a hope. I would say, I hope it's resilient. You know, in my six years in Harwich, two months on the job, we had a tornado, something that hadn't happened in more than a century. Four months after that, my boss was let go, and I was put in charge. Three months after that, we had COVID. And so I think, you know, approachable because I give out my business card to anybody, and it says, "Go see Joe," you know, and that's part of my leadership strategy, if you will. Goofy because we can't take everything too seriously. And then I think resilient because you have to be in this day and age.
Awesome. So to piggyback on that, is that okay? So in this job, there's times that you have to handle or have difficult conversations or have conflict. What is your thoughts about difficult conversations and conflict, or what is your strategy?
Well, my thoughts are they're unavoidable in life, and they're unavoidable when you're a leader. You know, there's going to be a time when you are the one that has to have those conversations. So my strategy that I always try to go with is remember you're talking to a human being. And, you know, not the golden rule, per se, but, you know, I can sit here and tell you about a colossal failure. That's not something I'm ever going to forget, and it's something that I think has softened me as a leader, to recognize that we all have good days and bad days. Everything that I'll do is with an eye towards what is best for the organization. And so the difficult conversation, whether it's, you know, performance-based or financially-based, whatever, it all circles back to what's best for the town. So never forgetting that there's two human beings talking to each other, but also that they are necessary for the betterment of the town.
Thank you.
Yes, you said something about you'd try to find ways to get extra revenue or different ways. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so when we talk about local receipts, that's the bread and butter for Harwich or for any town in the Cape. You know, when you do the comparison, I think you folks are somewhere along the lines of 16% for local aid, and we're 0.6. But you might be 6% local receipts, and we're 18%. And so I don't want to kill people with fees, but we want to make sure that we're deriving revenue that supports the programs. And of course, we do that, being mindful of the standard, excuse me, mindful of the standard set by Emerson versus City of Boston, so we can't just create these fees. There's a simple worksheet that you can do, so that's one of the things I want to look at because we want to make sure we're capturing everything. But I don't want to do death-by-a-thousand fees. When I talk about other resources, it's the wastewater investment, the WIF. If there is a special purpose stabilization fund, I was able to establish a few of those. Now, we can look at CPA. Do we want to take a portion of that to fund the special purposes funds, to fund the WIF? I think everything has to be on the table, but what I'm always trying to do is really what comes second nature on the Cape, is you don't want to overburden the levy. You know, the, we see the revenue coming in because we see the valuations going, you know, skyrocketing, but I grew up in a home in Braintree where we were a house rich and cash poor, and so I think that's a real thing. So that's why I'm talking about other sources. I can't speak as articulately as I want to because I haven't had a chance to dive into the numbers, if you will, but I know there are opportunities out there. But that also doesn't mean that the first year may not show some retrenchment in some programs, hopefully not services. We have to get away from the one-time sources. That's the most critical element.
Can I, thanks, Kevin. Can I ask a follow-up on that related to capital planning? So our town faces major capital decisions, including our schools, DPW, and facilities. So how would you assess or realign the capital improvement plan to balance infrastructure needs with taxpayer impact? So how would you strengthen, for instance, the collaboration between the town and the schools to address some of those capital improvements?
Well, I think any town that's been around for more than a, you know, century or and a half has those infrastructure needs. You know, municipal buildings are the, you know, least invested in, if you will, you know, structurally, and that's certainly no different for the schools. The benefit for the schools is if we have major problems, we might be able to rely upon the school building assistance, but we don't have the similar thing on the municipal side. But when it comes to capital planning, that was a big part of my responsibility. And so when I came in, it was somewhat of a scattershot of a capital plan, so I revamped the forms, revamped the process, and really redirected free cash for those purposes. It was not all free cash. None of it was levy unless there was a debt exclusion or there was an override for like a fire truck once or twice. But that's also where other funds came into play, where there were other funds available, like, lack of a better phrase, the cable fund. You know, there are other receipts reserved. And if we don't have them, we can establish these. So, and then through it all, as you develop the capital plan, and I can't recall if you have a five, seven, or 10-year. When I was in Harwich, we, they had just shifted from 10 to 7, and I got it to 5. I think five-year capital plans are very manageable, and it ties into your five-year forecasting. And then how do we get it done with anything that we're going to do? We're going to get everybody at the table, you know, the decision-makers, the stakeholders, the advocates, and we're going to have frank conversations. You know, I said the same thing to the screening committee. I'm usually not this deep into a conversation about a municipality, or I haven't already said that the operating budget is your statement of priorities. So your capital budget's going to reflect that as well. So we're going to have to come up with priorities. It's, not everybody gets everything they wanted all the time, and I think the most critical needs will be obvious on their face, and that's where you have to start.
Thank you. Do you have a question? No? So I'm going to change gears again. Going back to the schools a little bit. So... So, towns and schools, it's not new to Norfolk or anyplace, but there's a difficult dance because the schools are such a big part of the budget. So how do you imagine your relationship with the schools as being?
So, when I look at your system, I actually think of two school systems. You certainly have the Norfolk Public Schools, and you have the regional relationship in King Philip. And so, that mirrors more of what I was used to in Wellfleet. We had what was called a Wellfleet Elementary School Committee, certainly much smaller, and the commitment was greater, but we still had to work with the school committee on their projects. Coming from Harwich, I inherited a system, because Harwich changed to a regional system with Chatham back in 2012, so a few years before I started. And I'm not sure how it came about, but they established these monthly, what we call finance meetings. So it would be the town administrator and my partner, the finance director, because we're both appointed by the board, and Chatham, it's the town manager, and her direct report, the finance director. And we met with the superintendent and his business manager, and we do that monthly, year-round. And it was so that all parties could share outside of the glare of the meeting room, you know, to have frank conversations, and also be transparent about what we're dealing with, what we see coming down the pike. And so I think that's useful, certainly when it comes to the other towns that are in the King Philip District, but also with representatives from administration for the school committee and the schools district here. You know, you look at my resume, you'll see, I started out, you know, like I said, sworn in on my 24th birthday on school committee. You know, that's always been near and dear to my heart. And in Braintree, it was, you know, a single system, K through 12, and I remember being the advocate for more money for the school committee, and I remember before I was moderator with people saying the schools get too much. Public education is critical, and it, to me, defines not just the culture of a community, but when you talk about your priorities. So we have to invest, certainly K through 6 on that, but we have to do it in a way that doesn't disenfranchise public safety, public works, you know, the other big three, if you will, that are out there. So I think when you use the framework that I'm familiar with, and you're having these regular conversations, and you're going to hear me say that a lot, you know, the town administrator, the best thing I can do is have serial conversations with everybody connected to the budget. And so it'd be no different with the system here. And then, like I said, your budget is your priorities, we come to an agreement on that, and we all go lockstep at town meeting in 152 days and try and get it done.
Thank you. So, yeah, speaking of the budget, this town places high value on transparency, customer service, and public engagement, which we haven't always done the best of. So what systems and communication strategy would you implement to improve trust and increase clarity around the budget, as well as visibility for what's happening in the town hall?
Well, for me, it's, I'm going to start with the visibility part, and, you know, your 90-day question earlier that I'm still working on coming up with a stronger answer. But what I was expecting is, you know, if I get the job, what do I do in the first, you know, week, the first 90 days? There's a reason why I keep saying 152, because that's what I've always done. Everything we do ends up at town meeting. Our budget, our laws, our critical projects, and so, whatever I do in the next, you know, 90 days is geared towards the 152 days. But it's the same thing I'd do if we were 152 days past town meeting. I want to be out and about in the community. I don't want to be stuck in an office, I don't think that benefits anybody. I want to be reaching out to the service organizations, the faith-based organizations, certainly the parent-teacher organizations, anyone that's willing to listen and willing to talk, I'm willing to listen and I'm willing to talk. And I think that's what it is, it's a bunch of serial conversations with all the parties. You know, I've said about my life moving beyond the bridge, wherever I end up, I plan on immersing myself in the community, doesn't mean I have to pay property taxes, but you'll always know where I'm at, and I'll always be accessible. That's where I talk about the "Go CJO." Your transparency is going to be easier, you have a great tool on your website, you know, the ClaireGov Financial Center, making sure that I'm adding content that supports that in narrative form, so that folks can always be reading up on it, if you will. So I can avail myself, if we're, I'm not sure what the status is of the newsletter, certainly would revive that. I know you've got a different website vendor than I'm used to, but we had a feature where you can get alerts, so I'd want to make sure we have that function. I'd rely upon the local cable station to do a town administrator's report. So really just being out and about and talking about Norfolk. And then, last but not least, like I said, for transparency is the other side of my business card, that if anyone ever has any question, and they don't have the answer, if they want to bump it up, "Go CJO."
Thank you.
Awesome. So let's say someone calls your office and they're angry about, I'm going to pick on DPW, because right now we have an interim director, so nobody will take it personally. Somebody comes in and they're angry with something that DPW did, what would you tell that person, and what would be your first action step, if any?
Well, I'd certainly want to get their side of the story, you know. Usually when somebody starts out angry, it's because they feel that they've been mistreated or something's wrong, but I'd want to make sure I have all the information. I'm not going to have an immediate connection from that person to DPW, I'd want to reach out to DPW, I'd want to get their side of the story, if you will. And many times, it's a resource allocation issue, or it's a misunderstanding of what the priorities were. So certainly hear that person, try to bring them to some level of peace, if you will, because we use the word anger, and then follow up, and if necessary, have a meeting with appropriate staff and that person.
Thank you. Should I keep going? Okay, I'll keep going. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just got a two-part question. What is your strongest, what do you feel your strongest weakness, or your strongest strength?
So is that really strongest weakness?
Well, you can do either one first.
So strongest weakness is my analytical ability. I love to dive into the data, and sometimes you can get too deep, and you've got to pull yourself back out of the rabbit hole. So that's a strong weakness, if you will, but I like to think that my strength comes in communication. You know, I had an inflection moment in my life where I could have gone to grad school and gone MPA, with all due respect to those that might have gone that route, I chose not to, because of my bachelor's degree. I could have gone to law school, and I chose to go to my alma mater, Emerson, and get a degree in communications, because no matter where you are in life, that's always going to be the most important asset, I think. Now, there are those, I will tell you, that I don't communicate well. Communication takes all parties, communication is a continuum, and so, you know, some of the things that I tried to do that didn't bear fruit might work here. Communication to the board, what I call my LBLAs, my look-backs and my look-ahead, what happened this week, what's coming up next week, give you that, monthly dashboards on, and these are things that can be posted on the website. So communication on all of its forms, and maybe there's also a strong weakness there, where you can know too much. So as you can tell, I'm always trying to crystallize my thoughts.
Awesome. I'm going to piggyback on that and say, so let's say you're offered the position, what would you anticipate would be your biggest opportunity in leading in Norfolk, and what do you think would be the biggest challenge in leading in Norfolk?
So I think the biggest opportunity is just marrying the skills that I've developed and the experiences I've had over the last 36 years, that all tie to town meeting. You know, that 152 is the number that, I've always done that, I've counted down in the corner of my, well, I don't know that we even use whiteboards anymore, but, you know, the countdown to town meeting. So this is the critical time to come in, so I think there's a great opportunity to build off of the work that Mike and the team have been doing, to take the baton and move forward on that. I think the greatest challenge is the one that's always going to be there. I will never know in my first year Norfolk, as well as everybody else knows Norfolk. So that's why it's critical for me to do the immersion, that's why it's critical for me to be out and about and present, so I can start amassing that institutional knowledge myself.
Thank you.
What steps would you take to assess the organizational health of the town hall and facilitate engagement across departments? So obviously, that's something that, you know, might take some time, but what steps might you take to do that?
So when I talk about staff and departments, this is an ethic that I learned in my time in the private sector, working in corporate banking, and it's one of those rare things where, you know, and I apologize if you were a candidate once that said, "When I get elected, I'm going to run the town like a business." You know, we know we can't do that, but we try to do the best practices from the business world. And one of the best practices I learned is being an employer of choice. And so that's something that I was able to do in my role as ATA in Wellfleet, and it was something I was able to bring with Harwich. So an employer of choice is first to the employees that are here. An employer of choice is one that says, "You're on our team, and we're going to support you and develop you and give you, you know, additional, no, not additional, ongoing training and support, so you can do the job in the best way possible." An employer of choice also means trying to reach out and bring in the best and the brightest. And so you do that, I think, through solid performance measurements, dialogue with staff, and last but not least, recognizing, I think it's in one of your charts, that 80% I think of your costs are related to personnel. You know, we are a human-driven organization, we don't have a product, per se, it's the folks that work day in and day out. And so, they're the front lines, and they're the most important piece. And so I want them to hear that from me, but I want them to feel that, and I want to make sure I'm supporting that day in and day out. So it's regular department head meetings, regular for me, I like to do it monthly, certainly if we need to do it more in the short term, we will, but also make sure that the department heads are cascading into their teams, and then I love meeting with the teams directly. Not to phase out the department heads, but just so that they can see the boss's boss. And so, you know, it's management by walking around and being present, it's management by example, and it's building a culture where people feel like the town of Norfolk is an employer of choice, where the best people want to come and the best people are retained.
Thank you.
I think we're small, we're growing, so we're growing in a way that's exciting and also a little bit overwhelming sometimes for our community. And in terms of inside town hall, to stay inside town hall, there's things that have always been kind of done a certain way, but our procedures are not always as clear, because we've just, we're little. And so we're tightening up on those procedures, but when you have procedures, there's a balance between having really tight processes to run an organization, but also having opportunities for exceptions, because it's also a human-based organization. And can you talk a little bit about that dynamic?
Sure, I think I can, and I think the word I'd want to use is flexibility. You know, and not to get into the parliamentary hierarchy of, you know, rules, regulations, and all, but procedures are meant to guide, are meant to be a resource to direct to accomplish something in a certain hopeful standard outcome. But exception processing, I think, is one thing I learned in the business world, and you know, you have to have that flexibility. So I've had a background in corporate world and training and development of developing procedures, I want to rely upon the folks that are the subject matter experts who do it, but like you said, always have the right of the administrator, the right of flexibility. And so, you know, you want to have those standards, you want to have the guidelines. I know when you're going for your AAA bond rating, the bond markets love to see those, the auditors love to see those. So we can, I think, you know, have a procedure manual, or manuals, that meet that with flexibility for the real life, and allowing for the exception processing.
Thank you.
So I have a question about your relationship, or how you see the relationship between you and the select board. What do you envision that that should look like, and also the other boards that have influence over some of the decisions that impact the town?
So I always want my relationship with the select board to be one of respect and mutual dialogue. It was difficult for a five-member select board, frankly. In my six years, I went through, well, I'll say it this way, there are more former board members in six years, twice the number than there are board members. And so that's what I talk about, where I'm looking for stability. I recognize that, you know, you may not run again, or you may be defeated, you know, there may be change, but ongoing discussions, one-on-one, and then collaboratively at board meetings. So I want to make sure I'm always giving you the information that you need to make informed decisions, and then making sure that we execute those decisions as an administrative function going forward. I always want to make sure that I'm adding value, and I always want to feel like I'm being valued. And so that's the sort of relationship that I'd want to have with any of the three of you and any of your successors, because I want to be here for a long time.
Thank you.
Do you have any experience with going through the strategic planning process?
Yes, both private and public sector, and, you know, the first thought that comes to my mind is master plan. I don't know if that's what you're thinking of, but certainly with that, but no, strategic planning from the financial forecasting, and really goals and objective setting. It is something that I did quite a bit in the private sector, something that I think is valuable in the public sector, and something that I could easily embrace, because it becomes a roadmap. You know, I talked about the strong weakness of analytics, well, analytics is good if it leads to strategy. And so, you know, it's a guide, guidepost for what we want to get done, and I think there's creative ways to do it.
Thank you. So I hear you say very clearly, having that roadmap of the 152, like the 152 days to town meeting, which I think is really valuable, actually, to kind of think about it in that way. How do you manage your personal goals or professional goals inside of that 150? Like, are there layers to the 152 to town meeting for yourself?
Certainly. I didn't have one of my talking points readily available. You know, in my tenure in Harwich, there were certainly, you know, mistakes, there were failures, there were problems, but there were also great successes, and the greatest success is when I came in, two weeks before I started, I was at town meeting as a voter, and the operating budget failed on a voice vote, and it failed in part because two of the select board members voted against it at town meeting. So I'm sitting there as a former moderator and all the experience that I bring, saying that this town may end up doing a 1/12 budget, which you never want to do. The irony is, a year later, we were doing 1/12 budgets because of COVID, but completely different, but, you know, that was earth-shattering to me, if you will. And so, when I got into the role as Assistant Town Administrator, I wanted to make sure that, and the budget eventually passed, and I think it was the second night of town meeting, but it was too chaotic. And so, in my time at town and Harwich, there was never a directive or a project or a goal of the select board that failed. There were eight town meetings that I was a part of, six annual, two specials, everything that was a strategic goal of the board, we were able to get passed at town meeting, and in most cases, so the 152 is constant communication, documenting, sharing, with an eye towards getting everything passed at town meeting.
Thank you. Hope you're good?
Yep.
What are your thoughts on commercial and retail development, specifically in Norfolk? Our tax base is primarily presidential at this point in time, we lack sewer infrastructure, which has held us back. But what are your thoughts in general about moving forward with commercial and retail development, specifically in this town?
Well, I think it's a necessary evil, you know, you know, never want to lose the character of the town, and this town has beautiful character, and this campus sort of is evident of that. But there's a way to bring in sustainable business that doesn't disrupt that culture and really ethic of the town, if you will, you know, the Norman Rockwell, if you will, part of it. And if we're able to do it smartly, so smart growth and all that, and, you know, doing it not spod- it not spot zoning, per se, but smart zoning, you can do it so that it takes the pressure off the residential tax base, I think. But you have to do it through all the regulatory requirements and the boards of that, and you need to be mindful about it. That's why I was talking about master plan. I'd like to sink my teeth into that as well, because that's probably going to be indicative of what the town wants to do. So, you know, necessary evil, what I hear a lot of folks talking about is economic development. And so what is that? And it's whatever the town calls it. You know, economic development in Harwich meant losing cranberry bogs, but replacing that with culture. And so, you know, we never thought we'd lose the cranberry bogs, we never thought we'd be a resort community, and that's how we pivoted. So, you know, it's finding the right kind of commercial development in the right places that augments and doesn't destroy what the town wants to have.
Thank you. So to kind of go on the back of that, one of the things that slows those initiatives that I think everybody in town is supporting, wanting more commercial development in our community, is the lack of sewer. And so we don't have sewer in downtown, which is then not making us very attractive to businesses to come here. And so one of the ways we're looking at partnerships with the Department of Corrections or different kinds of things, so do you have connections at, what connections or patterns of partnering with state-level people do you have?
So when you talk sewer on the Cape, we are delicate. We call it wastewater.
Yes.
But the Cape is nothing but wastewater now. And so in my six years, there was over $110 million in projects, two of which I was there for, start, one of them finished, and other one start and almost finished, and a third one coming online. So I'm very familiar with the State Revolving Fund, the Clean Water Trust, a lot of engineering firms and consultants, and that's what it's going to take, because you do want that infrastructure investment. It's critical, certainly, to start out in the downtown, but there's a tremendous value. Now, the irony of all that is, on the Cape, it was forced upon us. You know, Chatham, I think, is the only town back in the late '60s that took the feds up on the offer. So now we're reacting on the Cape. But there's a benefit to it. And really, when you talk about commercial development and economic development, there has to be that investment in infrastructure. And so sewer is something I'm very comfortable with. I just heard that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. I have, I thought I had a lot of questions, but I'm running low on questions.
So I just have a question about, obviously, you have a lot of experience working on the Cape, and I've been to Harwich, it's lovely. We go there over the summer to vacation, but it's a resort town, from my perspective, which is different from Norfolk. So how do you think, you know, your experience there, how can you apply that here, given that the makeup of the towns are different, the character is different, some of the challenges are different? What would you say in response to that?
Well, I would say, please don't forget the first 47 years of my life, you know, born and raised in Brantry and, you know, South Shore Plaza and all that came with that. So, you know, there's a lot of muscle memory that I'm familiar with here in Norfolk County as well as Norfolk, Mass. But it's the differences that make it fun, if you will. But in Harwich, you know, if there's anyone that's going to watch this, there's going to be someone swearing at the TV screen that I call it a resort town. You and I agree on that. Now, me, because I wasn't born and raised there, and I think you, because you've gone there, and that might have been the attraction. There are those folks in Harwich that still think they're a sleepy cranberry bog town. And so my point is, is if you're in the midst of it, it's difficult to see that it has changed. And so what I've learned is whether I'm in outer Cape, and that is Wellfleet for sure, you know, even in Harwich, we say it's way out there, and that's both physical and, you know, distance and everything else, but the challenges aren't so different. It's really understanding what is the truth of the community, you know. So do you consider Norfolk to be a rural community? Certainly residential and certainly, I don't want to say community town in a bad way, and I think we used to say bedroom community, because you can drive a car, take a train. But whatever the challenges are, they're all steeped in government, both local and state, and so that's why I'm confident I can rely upon past examples, things that'll jog my memory of, yes, we're not a resort town here, but when we had this similar problem or it worked out. So every town is unique, but the governmental problems tend to have an essence everywhere you go, in my opinion.
And on the question of, is Norfolk a rural town? I think it depends on who you ask.
Exactly, exactly.
Which brings me to, you know, there are dueling schools of thoughts on whether or not we should continue to build and allow commercial development into the town. So how would you manage that with the town residents? There are those that want Norfolk to stay exactly the way that it is, and there are those that think, you know, we should move into the future and do some more commercial. So how would you manage that as the town administrator?
Well, I think I'll put a bias out there in the sense that I don't, I'm not a person that believes that building is the future, you know, and if there's those folks of that mindset, there are ways to accomplish the core agreement that everybody wants to get to. So there are folks in Harwich that have said that we're too far behind the times, and there are folks right next door that are saying, "Look how much we've overgrown." So one of the things that I'm proud of is my connection with a private organization, the Harwich Conservation Trust. So while we're developing, we're also making sure that there are pockets in town where there's beautiful open space, and let's put a conservation restriction on that so that it's always that beautiful space. And where it's more appropriate to build and develop, let's do that. So there is a way to balance it, there is a way to keep the green space. Everyone's always going to be concerned about losing the charm, you know, but charm is subjective, you know, and what's charming to us now may not look charming in 40 or 50 years, but green space is always going to have its value, and the right kind of development near highways and whatnot is always going to have its value as well. And so we've done that in Harwich. We've made sure we've preserved certain open space and conservation areas while we're building in other parts of the town.
Thank you.
It's a balance. And then how do I do it with the residents? The way I'd want to do everything, open, communicative, hopefully transparent. You know, the town administrator has to be, in my opinion, the face of the voice of the board. And so there's those difficult conversations, there's those examples that we talked about before, but, you know, that's the beauty of the job, in my opinion.
So a lot about, like, leadership by walking around and serial conversations, that's exciting about building those relationships with you and indirectly with the board than doing that kind of work. How do you build relationships across departments or build that sense of vision within, not just with, if you see what I'm saying, like, you're having a connection here and a connection here, but how do you build that culture, is maybe the word that I'm looking for, across departments so that there's a more efficient or exciting sense of self for our town?
So I think what I'm trying to invent is having these personal connections that build relationships. And so one of the things I like about government is having a conversation over here with some folks, and then a few days later, hearing from folks over here and recognizing that they may not know each other and they may not see where they have similarities. And so that's the beauty of the job of the administrators, hearing those different voices and hopefully relying upon the communication skills that I claim I have and the experiences that I've had to weave a story together that everybody can see that they have a piece of it. And so it's building relationships, you know, that's the exciting part about the job. Not knowing Norfolk, Massachusetts, I couldn't tell you even what your zip code is, I should have recognized that, you know, things of that nature, but knowing what government is and what local government could be. So it's the joy of learning a new town and meeting new people, but also solving old problems with skills that have been tried and true.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm all set.
You're all set?
I think I'm good.
I think we're good, too. We're really, really grateful for your time, and it's been a pleasure to meet you. Is there anything you want to ask us or that you want us to know that we didn't cover?
So I'm looking at Bobby, because he knows I can't say hello in less than 20 minutes. Well, first, what I'd like to say is, you know, I came in prepped, and I wanted to give the best answers on my background and my experiences, and the reality is, is you're not going to know me until you know me, and I'm not going to be able to prove myself until I can prove myself. So whatever concerns you may have had from the internet, it's not all accurate. And whatever I want to demonstrate, the saint that I am, it's not all accurate. But the reality is that I'm a person that has literally grown up in local government. I love what local government's all about. You know, there's nothing more personal than local government. So it has been a privilege to be here tonight to talk to you about that. I hope I've convinced you that I can make a big difference here in Norfolk. So I don't have any questions, per se, but I want to thank you for the time. I want to make the case that I can be your next best town administrator, that I can bring stability and rely upon resilience, and that you get the same. Regardless, I wish you all the best. These searches are difficult, but they're meaningful, and I wish you the best in your decision-making. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to take the water with me.
Yes, please do. Thank you. Oops, I was going to check your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're under no obligation to stay, but we're thrilled that you're here.
I'm trying to wait out my kids going to bed.
Good idea.
Smart.
I know that feeling.
You ready?
Ready.
No need to leave extra time in between.
No.
No.
And he said he had people come 15 minutes early.
It says on my computer it's going to attempt to plummet.
It says that?
Temperature, yeah.
It is supposed to plummet. That's where the wind is coming in. So Andrew, I lied to you about that little segue thing. We'll need the segue.
They still say a storm on Saturday?
I think they're coming in.
Do they still say a storm on Saturday?
I don't know, I didn't see the...
Oh, I didn't see that, is it?
There's supposed to be one, I heard earlier in the week, I don't know if it's still there. You ready in there about the weather, Mike? Supposed to be a storm on Saturday?
I don't see it on my app.
No?
It's cold.
Cold?
Just cold. See, I prefer the storm, at least then you get something.
Yeah, that is pretty.
Right, no, just the cold.
Christmas freeze tomorrow night. It's going to be cold.
Oh, goodness.
Saturday, the Lions.
I'm coming by, you'll see us.
Yeah, but I'm going to be there for the two-hour shift selling them.
My daughter's going to be selling Girl's Got Cookies.
Oh, okay.
I can't remember who Taylor's going to be there, we have the Lions for that.
Let me know what day.
It's chilly.
They're getting together, they'll be in in one minute.
It's still cold out, Anita.
Yeah, I think it's getting cold.
Hasn't improved.
That's what we were just talking about.
It wasn't that cold. This water was in my car, and it didn't freeze, though.
Yeah, you said that.
The support team, the Girl's Got Cookies will be there for most of the day selling cookies at the tree lot.
Okay, thank you. Won't help my diet, though, but they're so good.
Yeah, now we're regretting, we're like, everyone has their tree up so early. We're like, after Thanksgiving, people, we're not doing it before. But now it's too cold, I'm like, I wish we would have did our lights two weeks ago with everyone else.
I put the Christmas light to the garage, it was like 45 degrees out.
Yes, smart, smart.
And we still have a fake tree, but a pretty tall one, and the only people who can do that are my grandkids. I can't go up on the ladder. I set up the ladder, I don't go up on ladders anymore.
I was telling my husband that, I think our ladder days are close to the...
Yeah.
He's on the roof, I'm like, ugh.
He's on the roof?
Yeah, cleaning the gutters, I think. Those days might be...
They should put an age limit on ladders.
Yes, I agree.
I think so.
I agree.
Yep. Mike knows what happens when old people climb ladders.
Can't hear either.
Anita, I didn't mention it in our opening, but I can't say enough about Amanda and Judith.
I know, they're rock stars.
This wouldn't have happened without their help, and I think Kristen agrees that they kind of pull everything together. We do a lot of writing and stuff, but they pull everything together.
Superpowers.
You've got good staff.
All right, folks, candidate number two is Rob Garrity. Rob, come on in. Rob, as you may or may not know, has extensive experience in the public sector, nonprofit, and higher education. Mr. Garrity.
Good evening.
Hello. Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Usually I introduce us, but I think you know us.
I've been around a little.
Just a little bit. So welcome. What I'd like you to do, we're going to ask a bunch of questions, and at the end, we'll give you a chance to ask any questions you have of us, but what I'd like you to do to start is briefly bring your resume to life for us and include part of that, what makes you interested in this position.
Okay, sure, sure. So as you see from my resume, I have had 23 years of service in state government. I've worked in nonprofits. Currently, I'm at Northeastern University, where I work for the Chief Administrative Officer. We oversee all the basic functions of the university, from IT to HR to physical plant, even the dining halls and the laundry. What interests me in this position, there are two things. One, I am a resident of Norfolk. I've been here for 30 years. I moved here slightly before getting married. I went to King Philip, where I met Kim, and we married, and she is a Norfolk resident. She's not a townie, because she's only been here since second grade. She's hoping when she hits 50 years here, they can, there's a plaque or something. But she's very bad with directions, so we decided we have to move here. And I, my first house in town, actually, was Frank Gross's apartment, right across from the train station, which was really convenient. I love government. I love public service, and I really love local government. I volunteered, I've volunteered here since I moved here. I've been on the Personnel Board, Zoning Board, I was on the committee that put together the DPW when we took the Water Department and the Highway Department, put them together. I've been on the Select Board, and I've done the last four years on the Advisory Committee, which has been really interesting. In my professional life, I was, I worked, for instance, in the city of Newton for almost a year and a half, and I was the Sustainability Director, and there I did a streetlight project. So this is why I love local government. We changed over 8,200 LED streetlights. We did it ourselves, we didn't have a power purchase agreement or, you know, an agreement with an ESCO. We bid it out, we developed the bid documents, we bid out the labor, we bid out the parts, we worked the logistics, and I spent over 20 nights between June and September of that year at dusk, standing on front people's yard, on the front yards of people, and looking at their streetlight and saying... and saying, I can see how that glare is coming into your kitchen. I see what you're saying. I think that's going to need an A123 shield. So we'll give you one of those. There was only one shield. I could have ordered it from my desk the moment that they called us, but going out and giving that personal touch to people was, I feel, a key to making that project successful. Because with any big project, like the LED streetlights, you always have concerns about, well, what's the color temperature? You know, I don't like the glare. So we had, it was part of the campaign to make people feel comfortable about it. When I worked at the state, we used to joke, you know, state government, we really, we're the ones who do things. Federal government just moves money around. But when I worked for the municipality, you realize, no, most of what people deal with every day comes out of local government. And in these times when I think there's a lot of concern about government, a lot of skepticism, having effective, open, efficient government at the local level is the best thing we can do to challenge that. This is where the cynicism starts. If we can stop it here, you know, I think it's worth doing. So that's why when this opportunity became, when this opportunity opened up, I actually, I applied for this 20 years ago, when Jack and I were in a pool, Jack Hathaway. And neither of us went on as finalists, and the select board didn't like the finalists and pulled Jack out.
... operating budget, which obviously is unsustainable. So in your first 90 days, how would you evaluate and correct this practice while maintaining service levels and protecting our double bond rating?
So we have, I think we have a chronic and acute problem. Okay? The acute problem is the $400,000 tri-county specific issue. We all have recognized that that can't continue. That has to find a solution. And the chronic problem is 93% of our tax load is residential. We have very small commercial. Now, you can't solve that in 90 days. Okay? We have to be on a path for the chronic issue of developing town center, moving along town center development, and 1A115, which I think is actually, it's growing, but it's underutilized. You know, that's a part of town that could grow more easily than downtown because of the constraints we have, particularly around wastewater, which there are solutions in sight. So in the immediate, for 90 days, I think we have to do a crash budget exercise. So what we've already done with the Citizen Academy is laying the groundwork. You folks have put together a group of people that are getting a better understanding of what the town budget actually supports. What's it mean? What's this money mean? And that's going to be important come town meeting, which is more than 90 days out. In the first 90, I think we have to look at, we have to prepare for all the questions we're going to get as we go along. Because come town meeting time, there are going to be hard choices to make, right? So we have to do really good work on budget to actuals, spend trends over the years. When I was on the select board, we, like at town meeting, the administrator loves to show this graph of our budget year over year, and this was a 3.2% increase, this was a 4.6% increase. Well, there's one year in there with a negative increase. And that was the year I was a selectman. I was on the board. And we went, it was an all-hands-on-deck exercise. Every department head, the town unions were all involved, everyone worked together, and we weathered the crisis. People need, if they are given the right information, enough information, they'll make the right choices. So we have to, over the 90 days, do a complete deep dive. This is what we're spending on. This is what we've been spending on. This is what the trends look like. This is the actual future needs. One thing I think we could do better is longer-term planning. So laying out to the town what this looks like in three and five years. Like, I do, we did do a CIP several times in the past, you know, five or six years. But a real, rolling, five-year CIP that is redone every single year should be a high priority of this town. Because our capital is funded right now through free cash, which means it's up and down all the time. So every year becomes sort of a contest about what's the most emergent thing. And that's not a great way to plan. That gets you into trouble.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'll keep going. Complete change of...
Okay.
So the people you work with right now, what are three words that they would use to describe you?
Um...
Only three.
Only three. So I think they would describe me as thorough, energetic, and it's hard to say this in one word, open book. I am, and perhaps it's because I started out in my professional career working in the legislature, and then I moved into basically working with the legislature. Communication has always been one of my stronger points. I am a communicator, an over-communicator, some might say, but I think that's one of my strengths also at work. You know, I am the person that is tasked to do the things when something needs to get done. My job is, it's called the senior director. It is essentially, you know, sort of a quasi-chief of staff. We don't have that title at Northeastern. We don't use that job description perfectly. But it is, here are, this is a problem. You're going to go fix this. That's what I excel at. It's what I did in my other jobs. I ran PMOs, project management offices in the governor's office. I developed the first PMO at DOT. And when we got to DOT back in 2015, a lot of life was putting out fires, which was my primary role.
To go on the back of that, can you tell us about a mistake or a project that didn't go in a way that you wanted it to go and what the outcome of that was or what your takeaway from that was?
So when I first got to Northeastern, I, one of my roles is to track, follow, solve, mitigate audit findings. So we had an audit finding in one of our departments. And it crossed, it crossed SLTs, you know, senior leadership teams. It crossed the chancellor, the provost, and us. We were in charge of the global network at the time. And it was an issue in one of our campuses, but it involved another, another member of SLT. And I was coming off, you know, a year and a half in the governor's office, where you pick up the phone and you say, okay, we're going to put together a team and we're going to fix this thing. And the same thing I did at DOT. I would call up Health and Human Services. I would call up Environmental Affairs, say, okay, let's put together a team. We're going to fix this. Get it done. And I hadn't done the institutional reconnaissance necessary to understand the culture. So I started to get calls, are you messing around in the chancellor's office on this thing? And I said, no, I'm just fixing a problem. But, you know, we got this thing we got to fix. All right, I'll fix this. And I was working with the staff and we were all working together. But it wasn't done the way that the institution was comfortable with. So I think what I took out of that, because I had been in state government, you know, for 23 years, I was pretty comfortable with the entire place. I knew everybody. I knew what I could do and what I couldn't do. I had been in Northeastern for a month or two. So I was still, and I was still in kind of the mode of, all right, problem, solve. And I learned from that, that doing the institutional reconnaissance, understanding what the place needs to get to success was very important. I think, and it's, might be a lesson I learned late, but it's one because I have been in one place for so long. I think coming in here, part of the 90 days is listening, a lot of listening. And even though I've been involved as a volunteer here, you know, since practically 1994, still understanding how it really works in this building and the other buildings, and being able to get things done in a way that everyone's comfortable and on board, critically important.
So I'm going to keep going with that?
Okay.
Because you do live in Norfolk and you have a lot of connections with people in, that work in this place. There might be neighbors, they might, I don't know how the connections are, but there's people who are acquaintances, but there's people who are friends. And so managing, managing that in a leadership role with people that you're friendly with is complicated. Because there could be perceptions of special treatment or expectations of special treatment. And so how do you make sure that your culture, how are you going to handle that?
So, well, the obvious answer is, you have to treat everyone fairly. And I have, if I'm the town administrator, I have that role. That is my role to play. That is different from Rob, the resident. And I've always been able to, in my career, figure out the role and do what I need to do with it. When I was at DOT, we had an issue that I didn't feel comfortable with leadership direction. I didn't think we were attacking it the right way. And I, we raised it in the group. And they said, no, we're going to do it this way. So I took my boss aside, behind a locked, shut door, and I said, I think this is wrong. And I don't know if I can do this. And I realized I had two options. I could leave, or I could stay and do my role as chief of staff and support that direction. I supported the direction because it was more important to stay and do that job and get it done. Here, I will have a role as the agent of the board. And you're right, I've known many of these people for decades. All right? Our kids went to school together.
Yes, they surely did.
Kevin has seen my awful son's car. But I also, I think because of that, have the ability to say to people, look, John, I hear you. I know what you're saying, but this is why we have to do it this way. And I can't do it any other way. And I hope you can accept that. Now, I've had tough, I ran against Jay Tallerman for selectmen. Jay is a friend of mine, was a friend of mine. I don't think Jay talked to me for a couple of years after that. But Jay has appointed me to the advisory board now. I have the ability, I think, to talk, to deal with people in a way that doesn't leave a long scar. You know? And it's all about communication and setting out open expectations, open understanding. This is, this is the role. This isn't personal, but we have to do it this way.
But I'm just going to push a little bit. Like, if you're doing performative evaluations on people that you're close with or people you have those kind of relationships, how do you see that working out?
So I had the pleasure of doing a mid-career masters at the Kennedy School. And one of my classes was this sort of just panoply of management kind of things. And he had, the professor had a very ritualized performance management style. And it was almost like a Japanese tea ceremony. You know, it was very, you come into this and you start off with, I'm about to give you some feedback. You prepared for this feedback. And it puts you in a different place. It's almost like when you go to the dentist's office, right? And you're, you know, you go into your happy place while they're causing extreme pain. This isn't personal. This is our jobs. Now, I think it's interesting. When I was a selectman, Jack Hathaway was our town administrator, and Jack's kids and my kids were about the same age. And I was worried if, you know, one day I was hard on Jack, I might hear it at the ball field. Well, that part of it, my kids have aged out. I don't go to ball fields. But, so I'm not, we're all adults. That's going to be the key with people. We're adults and professionals, and I have to treat you like that. Because that's how I expect you to treat me when I ask you to do something. And part of this, part of the, part of the professional, part of personnel management is treating people like professionals, setting up that's not personal, and allowing, giving people the support they need to be successful. I do, I am a person who tends, who leans toward the no person left behind. It is much more expensive and disruptive to replace an employee than to make, than to skill up an employee. I tend not to give up on a person. I've had people that I've gone from probation to promotion. And I take a lot of pride in that. The person who was my secretary's executive assistant, you know, doing scheduling and whatnot, she's a deputy chief of staff now. You know, I love upskilling people. It's a fun hobby. You know, it's a win-win thing. Because we don't have to go out and find new people. And it's really hard in a municipal setting to find people sometimes.
Thank you. I've been dominating here.
Yeah, so, two-part question. One, why do you want this job? I mean, you alluded to, obviously, you applied before in the past. But what's driving you to pursue this? And second to that, like, given your experience as a selectboard person or a member, how do you see the role of the TA? What do you see the role as the TA with the selectboard? So two-part, two-part question.
Well, the second one is easier, so I'll take it first.
Sure.
You are the agent of the selectboard. The board makes policy decisions and votes on them, and the administrator carries them out. I am the executor of the executives' will. And that's a position I am very comfortable with and one that I've done throughout my entire career. I have served executives, senior leaders. So that's my role. Now, as for why this job, so when I left state government, I was fortunate enough to go Northeastern. And I kind of... .................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... For the town that gave me a place to raise my kids, a nice little house, and somewhere where I, I'm going to retire here, you know? This is, I'm not leaving Norfolk anytime soon.
So, to piggyback on that, it would be your first time as a town administrator?
Yes, it would.
So you haven't been in that specific role. And you would be working with people who are your neighbors and all of that. So what do you see as your needs, or your, in terms of mentorship, or in terms of making sure that you're supported appropriately as a first-time person in this role?
Yeah. So there's, so the MMA provides wonderful support, right? There's also STAM, the Small Town Administrator Group. I have actually a large number of friends who are local administrators. So this, today I was on the phone with Bill McKenney. Bill is the administrator in Winchenden. He's on some of the STAM committees. Bill and I worked together before in state government. He was a CFO in Weymouth. And so actually, he knows Mr. Gallagher. And he's, he's up there. Jim Boudreau, who's the town manager in Situate, is a longtime friend of mine. Jim was actually a mentor of mine when I was a young aide in the, in the state senate. He was working for another senator, took me under his wings, told me how. And Jim has been, to be perfectly honest, giving me some mentorship, you know, the past several months, as I think about this. Jay Ash was the city manager in Chelsea. Jay is a good friend of mine. And I've asked Jay a lot of times. Dave Ramsey, who lives in Attleboro, Dave and I haven't spoken in quite a time, but Dave was the administrator in Dover and Lexington. One of my, one of my reports at DOT is now the assistant HR director in Watertown. So if I had a question like about HR, I would reach out to Mike. But there are also, STAM and MMA have listservs that members can communicate back and forth. You know, people will put up, hey, have you ever dealt with X? And they'll, you can get an answer. So I think there is a support network that's out there if you go for it. As well as the personal supports I have from the people I've worked with over the years who are in this field now.
Excellent. So to piggyback on that, one of the things we have left open or available for the new town administrator would be to hire the position that's currently vacant of assistant town administrator slash human resources. So we felt like having the new town administrator make that decision felt like a good one. What characteristics will be, you'd be looking for in that, hiring for that position?
Well, I would hope that they would have good HR experience. You know, we need, we will need factual, educated HR assistants. Also, I, someone who has the ability and desire to handle communications. So communications out, communications within. So communicating with all the employees and communicating with the residents. This is such a fractured media environment these days. It's not like we all just tune into one news channel and get, all get the same news. You have to get people where they are. And there's a lot of different ways to do it. And I think the administrator will have a large role in that. Cable shows, playing cribbage at the senior center, looking forward to that. I know Mike's going to the senior center doing a Q and A this week. Excited about that. I do love the $4 lunches, I think we heard, with the Citizens Academy.
Wednesday, yeah.
Exactly. But there are things like, when I was at, by my nonprofit, I did a podcast. So that's an interesting way to get. AI presents some really interesting opportunities that you have to be watchful of. I view AI as a really good co-op who has great Google skills. So, but, there's a New Lebanon, I think it is, I think it's New Lebanon in New Hampshire, uses AI to take meeting notes, put them into a podcast that is actually voiced by AI. Now, you have to label that as these are AI-generated voices, but people can just download it and listen to it. So anyway, my assistant, I would want someone who has the HR experience, who has a, but has a passion for communication, because I think that's a big issue.
Thank you.
Does Kevin have a question?
Yes. What's one of your biggest weaknesses and one of your biggest strengths?
So, I think my weakness I touched on earlier was I do, I have a tendency to go 120 miles an hour sometimes. So jumping into that, that audit situation and trying to just, you know, shake some elbows and, and it comes from, I think, some of the jobs I've had are those kind of jobs. We have to get things done quickly. So learning to be a little more reflective. And I've gotten better at that. I think as, maybe as you age, that becomes easier to do. Also, I would say, earlier in my career, I was a horrible delegator. But I've, I think I've cracked that one. Like, for instance, the former EA who's now a deputy chief, because we trained her up, because we gave her stuff to do. So, those I think would be my weaknesses. You can get other answers from other people you ask. I think for my strengths, again, I, I'm very enthusiastic. So that comes across in communication. I love learning what other people do. And that works on a couple of levels. One, in a, in a setting like this, you're going to get to know by doing that, by going to someone and saying, okay, so what do you do? What do we do on a daily basis? Walk me through it. You'll learn tips about what we're doing, how we're doing it, and are we doing it well? Could, are there different things to change? Coming in as a non-municipal person, I may have some insight that I've learned from other process improvement scenarios that would help. But also, it makes people feel valued. It makes people feel heard. So I think, I would say, and it's hard to blow your own horn about your strengths, but I think my enthusiasm for people and what they do, and really getting to know people and communicating with them, I would count that as a skill. I am also, the flip of the coin on the rushing into things is I am a little relentless. I, I don't have a ton of outside hobbies. So, you know, I like to sit and watch streetlights at dusk for 40 nights. So, I count that as a strength. Some of my family doesn't count that as a strength.
So to piggyback on that, if we were to offer you the job, what would be the biggest opportunity for you that came from that? And what would be the biggest challenge for you if, that came from that?
So, the biggest opportunity is to make a difference. This sounds corny, I know, I know. But I, every part of my career has been focused around wanting to make a difference and do something positive, and make things better than when you started. So I've heard, I heard this story about baby beavers. If you take a baby beaver that hasn't even been in the wild, and you put it in a bathtub, and you put some sticks in, and you turn on the faucet, the beaver will try to dam up the faucet. It will try to dam up the bathtub. It's just their instinct. And I think there are people who are baby beavers. There are people who just want to fix things, who see things wrong and want to fix things. And I'm not saying there's a ton of things wrong. But this job is, all my town administrator friends say, fascinating because it's something different every day. It's a different challenge every day. And that's the kind of job I love. That's the biggest positive thing, I think, that'll be about, it's going to be interesting, it'll be active, it'll be, it'll be meaningful for people. The hardest parts about it are going to be, frankly, reading about myself on social media, which is why I tend not to read social media anymore. If you look at my social media feed, it's mostly like Patriots complaints.
Have you read all mine?
Kevin, I try not to.
That's because there aren't any. You can't read any of mine.
Ah, here you go.
Yeah. I was going to say, if you read them, I was going to have a problem there.
So, it hurts. And, yeah, I've been an elected official. And you guys, you folks know this, you ran for office. It is the rare person who comes up to you and says, boy, you're an idiot. You don't know what you're talking about, right? But there is, you know, a culture now of, it's really easy to get on a keyboard and say things. So, allowing myself to turn off the computer and say, let's have coffee and talk about this. That's, I am a coffee addict. So I will take anybody out to Dunkin' Donuts and we'll talk about something. I'm not going to react on the social media platform. That's going to be the hardest part of it.
Okay, I'll turn, do you have a question?
Yes. So you mentioned, you know, every day is something new in this, in this role. And you obviously have a strong background when it comes to strategic planning and finance. But how are you going to handle the mundane, like, [inaudible] with, you know, personal issues that they want you to solve? Which, you know, that part of the job might not always be as fun. So how would you handle that? And, and do you think there should be a process for managing some of that so that you, as town administrator, can focus on more of the strategic and financial priorities of the town?
So, I think, I think, I, my first job, my first paid job out of college was working in the state legislator's office. And I did that for three and a half years, I think. And our chief of staff used to say, you're not social workers. People would call up with problems. We would have to solve these problems. So I would challenge your contention a little about them being boring and mundane. I think everything that comes in is a problem that can be solved. And once you solve it, you've made someone, someone's life better. You know, it's the old Will Smith quote, if you're not making someone's life better, you're wasting your time. You know, so that, I would be actually charged by that. Now, my, my assistant administrator, they're going to get a lot of that work, okay? The easier stuff, that's going to go there. Amanda and the other person in the office, who, I'm under pressure, so can't remember the name.
Judith.
I'm so sorry. Ah, they'll get some of that work too. It's going to come around the office. And I think you could do things, you could do interesting things with technology and bringing in, using technology to bring in the issues and creating tickets. We've done this in various places. Couple of towns use something called Click See Fix, which I don't think we use here, all right? At least I haven't seen it. Which is a way that people can, this, the thing is broken again. There's something hanging into the street. You put it in, and it gets geocoded. You can do it from bing, ding, it creates a task order. You know? I think doing things like that will help. Because you're right, it can be distracting from everyday work and strategic work, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I've heard from, from our interim town administrator and the former town administrator, that they spend a lot of time responding to those types of requests. And when we, you know, obviously, those are important. I'm not diminishing any of that. But we also have other challenges that we have to solve for, which is our budget issue and all of the other things. So if you spend 80% of your time triaging, you know, concerns, you obviously have less time to do that.
Absolutely. But we have, there's, you know, there's four of us in the office. So we will split the work up. And I think it's important work to do. I always, and this is also going to be the kind of thing where, because I have no other life, really, I will be spending a lot of hours. When Mike came to the Citizens Academy, the first one, and said, I don't think you should hire a local, you know, because they have to, they might go to the pizza place and it'll take them 60 minutes to get home. I was a select board member. I'm used to that anyway. And that's what my life was like at the State House. My boss, when I was working for the secretary, I used to joke, we go to the State House and it takes an hour and a half to get through it because everyone knows you and stops you and asks you stuff. So, this isn't a 40-hour-a-week job. It's, I agree with Mike, it can be 60 or 80. And you just have to do the work. Because if you consistently don't do those small things, the big things don't happen either. You lose the ability to get the big stuff done.
Do you have a question? So, someone calls your office and they're angry. I'm going to pick on DPW, but I just made that up because we don't have a department head there right now. So, they're angry about something that they did. How, what do you tell that person? And what would be your first action step, if any?
Well, it depends on what the thing is. But that, that drives a lot. But the first action step is to say, thank you, I hear you. And then, go back to them with, this is what I heard you say. You had, you were driving down the road and there was a manhole cover that was misplaced? And you hit your rim? Is that what the issue is? And they'll say, no, you didn't listen to me, it was a drain. Or something like that. So you, you, failing to get the word, you say yes, you have a problem here. You get that problem. And then, get their name, get their number. I will see what I can do and we'll call you back. And then I will call the DPW. And we'll, by the time I'm in this job for six months, I'll probably know what the solve is right away. But early on, I'm going to call the DPW, I'm going to get the solve, and then we're going to call them back. And if I can't get it done on the first day, and this is what I used to do in New York, and this is what I would do when I was working in the legislature, I'd call them back, say, okay, we're still working on this, I will give you a call when we have more. And I'd do that probably the first day, the end of the day or early the next day. You validate what they said, that was the word I was looking for. You validate what they said, you type it up as a ticket, or however we deal with these things in the future. And you keep contact. Don't disappear, that drives people crazy. Let them know what we can do and what we can't do. Because there are no really new problems on, everything has been, happened to somebody before. So there will be ways to solve it. I, in my, in some of my jobs, we do a lot of SOP development. So I, I have this, there's this thing, which is essentially a bunch of notebooks on a stand. So and you just, and I think Jack, actually, used to have one of these. And you flip through and, okay, okay, guy hit a rim, hit his rim on a manhole cover, this is what we do. So you can get a lot of the work done if you've planned ahead.
So to go back to something that I'm wondering about, you said, if you're here six months, you would know what the fix is, right? And do you think that there is, it could be, even though you know what the fix is, DPW should still fix it?
Oh, absolutely.
So does, do you know what I'm saying about, is it hard for you to stay in your lane and let people do their lane? Or is that something that you're aware about when you know your job?
I would say it was something I had a problem with when I was earlier in my career. But as your jobs get bigger, you can't do that, because then you can't do your job. And when I say I'll know what the answer is, I'll know, okay, I can just call Jack on this, or Joe, and we'll, we'll get this fixed right away. Not, this is going to take me a little bit of time to figure it out. That's what I mean by, I'll know the solution.
Okay, just, just clarifying.
Yeah.
So how do you handle difficult conversations or conflict?
So, is this with an employee or?
In-house, in-house. Like not, this isn't somebody calling about their rim. This is in-house, there's a conflict either between staff, or between you and staff, or a misperception about something. How would you handle that?
Well, you have to de-escalate. You have to calm the situation down. You set up a time to talk about things. You go in with a plan for what you need to say, and you stick to that plan and see how it unfolds from there. You have to be calm, dispassionate. You have to hear the other person. Practice your active listening. And treat them fairly. People, at the end of the day, people expect fairness above all. They don't think it's right if they're treated differently from other people. And I've had conflict in roles before. Sometimes you need a little time to cool off. That's an important thing. Putting a stop on an item. You know, you start to, something heats up and says, okay, we need to talk about this at 4:00. I can't talk about it right now, I have a thing I have to do. And set it up for 4:00. And a good percentage of the time, people calm down in the interim, and you're able to discuss it rationally. And at first, my tendency is to let them talk. My wife, you know, one of her degrees is in therapy, and she's very good at letting people talk. And she uses silence very well. And it's a trick I've learned with employees sometimes, to use silence to get them, they'll talk about the issue, or if it's a board member, they'll talk, they'll start to hear themselves too. Then they'll maybe adjust. And I'll feedback what they've said, that's what I think you said. And then explain, this is why I think we have to do Y instead of X. And I think that's the best thing you can do. Hear them, validate them, and explain.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to shift gears a little bit here. So, the town faces upcoming capital decisions which involve schools, DPW facilities. How would you assess or realign our capital improvement plan to balance infrastructure needs? And how would you strengthen the collaboration specifically between the town and the school?
I've been pretty impressed with the collaboration between the town and the school of late. I've been in town at times where it's been much different. I think getting the HOD built was much more conflict-ridden than when we did, for instance, Freeman Kennedy. So I, on the advisory committee, I've enjoyed the relationship we've had with the school committee and with the superintendent. It's been very positive. I think there could be more joint discussions. Bringing the school committee and the superintendent in with the select board who represents, you know, they represent part, a part of the community. You represent a part of the, you know, the whole community. Getting leadership agreement worked out, you know, the superintendent and the administrator should have a very strong relationship. I think that's critical. And a fair relationship. I like what Mike did with the Chapter 70 increase this year. I thought that was fair. I thought it really was good for everybody.
In fairness, that was the school committee's idea. It was brilliant on their part, but
That was.
We acted on it, but it was their brilliant idea.
I've heard mine too. No.
I want to give credit where credit is due.
No, that, that was great. And that's what I mean. There's been a real, a lot of, of late, real collaborative work with the school committee. So, and at Mast dot, we have five-year CIP with projects that are $50 million. Now here, we have a CIP that has, you know, $4,000 for this, $28,000 for a vehicle. Now here, we have a CIP that has, you know, $4,000 for this, $28,000 for a vehicle, $4, 000 for an addition. You know, these are kind of different categorical items. So I think you develop your CIP with the more routine capital pieces involved. And then the large, stunningly large capital pieces are a different process because they're going to... They're going to require different action. We're not going to fund this A school addition out of our normal capital funding, which is either free cash or if we develop the ability to actually put regular money into capital, that would be ideal.
There's trees that grow that kind of...
Yeah, there's...
And as the town administrator, you know, one of the things you would have to do is message what those needs are, right, to the community? So... And some of these things are contentious, hot-button issues for some. So how would you approach messaging the needs without, you know, getting into the debates over, you know, whether or not it's needed? Yes, in like an impartial way?
Well, I've always... I've been actually... It's always been smaller things that suffer, larger capital projects. They... They're difficult to do. But the more mundane or ongoing maintenance kind of things, that's something that needs sponsorship. This A school addition is... I don't think that, as town administrator, I would be able to go to the town and say, "You have to do this," unless my board is there, the school committee is there, there's a consensus. Then I become an agent of you folks. That's the elect... That's the role of the electeds on a ma... On a large issue like that. And I see the administrator as making sure that everyone keeps in mind, "Don't forget, folks, we need to do a new roof on the library. So that's got to stay in the CIP. It's going to happen in year four. We can't let it slip to year eight. Let's keep our eye on the ball on that." You know, I know the school is a very important issue. It's been talked about a lot, which is good. I think it's going to take a lot more conversation. This is one of the things we suffer from by not having a communication... A good communication environment that we live in. We don't have a local paper anymore. I mean, say what you will about the suburban press or at one point, the mosquito.
Country Gazette.
Well, I don't know if the Country Gazette even exists anymore, does it?
It's the Norfolk Rhythm paper, I think they call it now, yeah.
Yeah. So there you go. And I was looking in the Sun Chronicle to just try and see if, you know, my name had popped up in the Sun Chronicle. And I think they've covered this at all, you know? So we live in a tough media place, the media environment, to try and get a 40-plus-million-dollar project done.
I definitely do. While back, I don't know, the beginning of this process, many of our employees in town came to us with a candidate, which we had already committed to the process and felt like the process was really important in getting to the end. But then if you were hired as town administrator, there would be... I think there's a lot of room for culture growth, not with personal relationships, but as a culture, a whole culture. And what steps do you see yourself taking to build that kind of culture that's collaborative? Where I hear you talking about raising individuals, but raising a collective.
Right. So I am a big fan of building a culture based on shared... A shared vision, a shared goal. And you do that in many ways, but there are... I know, if a previous administrator had like a Bagel Wednesday... Now, we do that at work. We have a Bagel Wednesday. I do think gathering your staff on a regular basis, the group, or going to the DPW, or going to the COA, and keeping in touch with those employees regularly, that helps to build a culture. I would love for us to have it... To have the ability for employees to spend 40 bucks to get a polo with the Norfolk...
Here.
There you go. You know? So one of the first things I would do is I'd go on the listserv and, "Does anybody have a deal with club colors?" So I think that's the company we use at Northeastern that does all of our swag. And allow people, you know, "You can get in. We're going to do a big order, everybody." People unhappy. But you wouldn't do this on a day-to-day basis, year after year, if you didn't really love what you did and didn't feel good about it. So I would see my job as the administrator to build up that team spirit, that spirit of, "We're doing important work here." And part of that is going around and saying, "Okay, so what do you do? How do you do this? You know, what do you think?" Also, you know, part of my job, frankly, is to be here when they're not. You know? I think as administrator, I should be the first person in and maybe the last person out. You know, leading by example like that as, "I'm here. I'm committed to all of you." Because all of you make this town that we love run. So there's a number of things I would do.
So I have a question about economic development. As you know, we must implement the MBTA Communities Act. So how should we do this while preserving our rural character as a town? And how would you guide some of the boards zoning, et cetera, to comply with the law but also enhance the long-term financial stability of the town?
Well, I think that we... There is help that we can get. We can get help from our regional planning agencies. We can get help from the state. When I was on the select board, I tried to do... I got mocked miserably by some other members because I wanted to do design charades on things. But when I was in my first run in state government, I ended up in the Office for Commonwealth Development, which was the Romney-era Smart Growth Office. And we did a lot with building community capacity to grow smartly, to understand, you know, we have... We have a beautiful downtown. The downtown should be denser in that it should have more stuff, right? And when I was on the select board, a big issue was the supermarket. You can't get a supermarket with the number of doors we have within certain radius of the supermarket. We need to create some degree of density in the downtown if you want things to do here, if you want a restaurant. So focusing on that, focusing on the 1A, 115, I think... Do we have the Economic Development Committee anymore?
No.
Yeah, see...
I think when Kate left, that was...
Yeah. Re-energizing the EDC. I think there are a lot of opportunity, volunteer opportunities that we had in the past that we don't have anymore. And you need... We need to get more people involved. I want to go back... I haven't seen the Citizens Academy with the IT folks. I know it just got posted and I'm looking forward to listening to that. But, you know, I'm going afield from the question. I'm sorry. Sorry, person hit me. But we... Cybersecurity is an enormous problem. Small towns, there's... You are vulnerable to ransomware attacks, other attacks like that, denial of service. But we have resident knowledge that isn't employee knowledge. We can get residents involved. I went back and I looked at, I think, 1994 versus today on the volunteer committee opportunities. It was something like 140 each and 94. You know, there were more back in... Because they... Now, fair, we had the town time because we were redoing Town Hill and there were a couple other special committees. But I believe in getting more folks involved. I like... I believe in the wisdom of the masses, you know? I think if we can get more people involved, get more people... And the more they're in, the more they understand about it. So you become upset about things that you maybe don't understand as well as you could. So if we get a new EDC together or maybe a specific committee to work on the downtown, people will get a better understanding of what we need. If it's what you started with Citizens Academy, which has been really cool, we need to do more of that. So I would use the native resources we have here and get...
Okay. Thank you. We're coming to the end of our time. Do you have any questions for us or have anything you want to share that we haven't covered?
So what does... What does success look like in 12 months to you folks?
I'll answer. I think success looks like... There's two pieces. There's a financial piece where we have a balanced budget and we left free cash alone. That would be sweet. And if we could do that in a way that didn't impact our taxpayers, that would be like miraculous. So I think that is definitely successful. I think if we had a more collaborative, cohesive town hall, employees would be a sign of success. And in a society, and I'm not speaking specifically right now, where they... The research shows that we are, as a people, not Norfolk, but as a people, we're less and less curious and we're more and more addicted to outrage. I would like, in that culture, through magic, for us to understand, but in Norfolk, we have ways to... We are heard. We are listened to. We are solving problems together. We are... I sign everything together. We are Norfolk together. We are Norfolk. And we are. And I believe that in my heart. And I think the success looks like us together imperfectly and... Like not being uniform, but that the diversity that is us, working together to make Norfolk the best that it can be. That's my answer.
Yeah. And from my perspective, to your point about communication, I think, and I've been beating the drum on this since I joined the select board, but we need to do a better job of communicating to the town what our challenges are, what we're doing as town government. And so all of the suggestions you made about reinvigorating the newsletter and using AI to help, you know, get information out, I think are things that we should look into and try to implement. And then also, you know, we have that wonderful master plan that so many people spent so much time on. I would love to be able to get our master plan implementation team up and running and start to move some of that work forward. So that's what success looks like to me.
Yeah, I agree with some of that. Community involvement and get the community together is a big success. But like she said, getting the balance to get the budget without laying off 20 people instead of just using free cash to get a balanced budget, that's one of the key things.
Yeah. I can't say anything that surprises me in any of that. That's from where I sit on the advisory committee. That's another way I look at it, too.
Awesome.
So if I could close?
Yes.
So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your late night. I know it's going to be even later. Thank you for your volunteer service to the town. And this isn't just a checkmark on my career. This isn't something else I want to do. I have a great job at Northeastern. I enjoy what I do at Northeastern very much. I have a wonderful boss. But this feels like a calling to me. It feels like something I could do for as long as I'm wanted. And it feels like a thing I can make a lasting, positive impression on, helping Norfolk go forward. Because it is a lovely town. I'm not going to badmouth any other towns. But look at the town common with the Christmas trees.
Stunning.
It's beautiful. Look at the... I love... I may get in trouble for this. I love the roundabouts. All right? I loved when we put them in. I know some people don't like them. I loved them. I think this is the train station downtown. This is the quintessential New England village kind of town. If we can... If we can go from 93% residential, 7% commercial to 85, 15, we can make this town a place that people flock to and stay and feel comfortable with, and their kids can live here, too. That's really important to me.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are we going on recess now?
Thanks, Rob.
Kevin will come around.
Yeah.
Are we going on recess?
Yes. I would accept a motion to take a short recess.
Second.
All those papers, yeah?
Aye.
We'll take about a five-minute recess and just so everybody... Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to the Norfolk Select Board. We're waiting for our third and final candidate. Will be here momentarily. David Kersey.
What?
Said I'll make the noise before you...
Yeah, before he...
Make the noise later.
All right. Madam Chair and Board, I want to present candidate number three, David Kersey. David is police chief in Mendon, but he has a lot to offer you folks. So don't hold that against him.
Yeah. Do you want to walk around the same way?
Well, let's...
Shake hands. How you doing, Kevin? Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
How you doing, Eva? Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Tyce.
Nice to meet you. I did a certain screening, too. Got a long way around. Is there a certain chair where the mic works better or...
I think everyone was sitting at that.
The chair's all warmed up for you. Sorry. Thanks.
So welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry, we're having a little snack.
That's okay. I'm sure it's been a long night.
Yes, Ben. Could you... So welcome. We're pleased to have you here.
Thanks.
Could you take a minute to briefly bring your resume to life for us and include specifically in that what attracts you in Norfolk?
Sure. It's a good question. I'll have to ask that in the future when I interview people. So you've read my resume. It's extensive in municipal government. My whole career has been in local government in this area. I started out as a 20-year-old police officer with no path of going into the municipal space, so the public space. Originally, I was a mean accountant. I was at Bryan College. I was going to go south, actually, to college. But during my senior year, after I graduated, my father was ill, had to have a surgery and passed away. So I decided to stay here with my mother. And I'm the youngest of nine, so I was the only one left in the household. All my brothers and sisters are much older than me. My closest sister is seven years older. So I decided to stay around here and go into accounting. And one day, I was driving by the state police barracks and heard an advertisement. Back then, that's how they advertised. There was no online. I said, "You know, this sounds interesting." Pulled into the barracks, filled out a resume. Before I knew it, I was on my way to becoming a trooper, but decided I didn't want to be a trooper on an island in state of mass. So I started my career in Mendon after I got out of the academy. Spent some time there as a patrol officer, probably my first 10 years. Then became a detective, was very happy. Had a lot of high-profile investigations. Actually solved the biggest financial crime in Mendon of over half a million dollars from an individual that was stealing from a company. Was pretty proud of my work. And then the financial crisis came about in 2007 to 2010, '12, at that time. And the department was cut. Things happened financially that the town couldn't support. We actually had to make layoffs. The select board decided to cut everybody 12% every budget. So whether you had a $2 million budget or a $10,000 budget, you had to cut that amount of percent. And, you know, for the police department, it came out to hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we ended up laying off a few officers, demoted everybody, lost our administrative assistant. And really, that's kind of was an opportunity that I didn't know was going to be presented to me for me to move forward in administration. They said, hey, does anybody know how to do a budget in the police department? Because the administrative assistant was gone. I said, I think Dave went to Bryan. Let's go take a look at him. And I said, well, I just have two years of accounting. I'm not a full accountant. They put me into that role. And I soon became involved with the Finance Committee. We tried to solve problems in our own department and other departments, how we could pool our resources to make sure we didn't cut as much as we needed to cut and to rebuild the departments. So I almost became an unofficial member of the Finance Committee at that point. Within a couple of years, I was promoted to an Administrative Sergeant. I handled, we had a regional dispatch at the time. I ended up handling the dispatch, all the grants that we had with it, anything, any state contact that we had. I dealt with Frank Posniak. I built a relationship with him. And then my career really kind of took off. I made two years of sergeant, then I became a lieutenant, two years of lieutenant, and then some situations happened where the chief decided to leave. And I was promoted from within and made the police chief. And during that time, they said, hey, we need some additional help. A small town, you've got to be willing to help out. They said, would you mind being the fire chief for a period of time? And I said, you know, whatever I can do to help. I didn't know a ton about the fire department. I mean, besides the experience that you have working with a fire department from a police department, but its administration. So I took on the role. I did it for a year for free. I just said, I'll just help out. We went through a process. The town administrator had assigned me to find a new fire chief. So we went through a process. We couldn't find anybody. A year had passed. And I said, hey, we need to find a fire chief. I really think we need to, because the previous chief was a fire and police chief. I said, we need to divide these departments and invest in our assets here and our people. So I said, I'm not doing it for free anymore. I want $500 a week to do it. And within minutes, they said, okay. I was like, ah. I was able to get him over, over to Mendon. And he served about six years and completely changed the department. And we have a great fire department, too. Also, I am the Emergency Management Director. I've served on that, served as that since 2016. For a period of time, I acted as the acting, pretty much, town assistant town administrator. I built a really good relationship with the new two-time administrator that we had. Her and I are both the same age. She was fairly new. I was new as a lieutenant. We found some connections in our past. Her family was originally from West Africa, Rhode Island. Her grandmother grew up with my father. So there was a connection that we were able to form. And we had a lot of commonalities. So I became a right-hand person. I had to, I picked up a lot of things that I wanted to do because I was a member of the community. I lived in the community for a long time. And I wanted to serve the community properly. So, and then my accomplishments as a police chief, built a capital plan. We were able to actually have a capital plan within the police department before, we used to lease cruisers, try to find equipment through free cash. Nothing was built into the department. We built, I built a rotating capital plan for cruisers at a replacement rate of one and a half per year. We built in operational expenses into our budget to replace certain equipment. Everything has a lifespan. So we have a schedule now that we know this year is tasers. The following year may be firearms. The following year after that may be AEDs. So it's built into there so we don't have to dig into the well. That can be used for the one-time capital expenses because we know we have recurring expenses. And the biggest accomplishment, I think, in the police department was the police station. We had tried to build a police station four times. When I actually started in 1997, I was riding to get my uniforms. And detective of the time told me, hey, good news, you're going to have a brand-new police station for your whole career. And I go, oh, that's great. And then 19 years later, we didn't have a police station. So that was, that was, that was something that I really wanted to do. And maybe we could talk about that a little bit later if there's any questions. But that was something that we worked on with a lot of different committees, with the CPC. And it was really unique how we were able to get that done. And then the last thing I wanted to do, which was probably the first thing, and I told the board this after it happened, they said, well, you're not done. I said, well, I don't have as many big things to do. And what was get the department accredited. 20, 30 years ago, we were one of the first departments accredited in Massachusetts. We lost that accreditation through the years, and I wanted to get that back. It's important. I think it's more than Massachusetts. It's in what the Post Commission that was established. Eventually, you're going to have to have a certification. So I think Post would be a good way to go. So as of last year in November, we actually got the certification and were the 10th, only the 10th town in Worcester County right now to have a certification of accreditation. So out of all the communities. So I think that was a great team accomplishment. But that's me in a nutshell. That's my career. That's my resume.
And then what makes Norfolk attractive to you?
Oh, I should be dropping this down. Norfolk probably goes back to you almost, actually. I, there's a few select communities that I'd be interested in being a town manager. And I love being a police chief. I'm not looking to run away from anything. But I've been doing it 29 years. And when I worked hand-in-hand with the previous town administrator, she has since left and gone to Orleans, the team kind of got broken up. And I felt like we did a lot of great things as a team. And I really enjoy that work. And it's something that I think towards the end of my career here, the next 10 years, would be something, 10, 15 years would be, it'd be a change of pace instead of finishing the next 10 as a police chief. I think 29 years is a long time. I still love the job, but I'm always looking to do something different and new. And I really liked that aspect when I worked with the town administrator. Norfolk is one of the few towns, when I heard about it, I heard about it actually in April last year. I was at a MECC event where Justin was there, and they're building a tower in Millville. So Justin had told me, I think it was sometime mid-April, that he had got a different job somewhere and he was moving on. So I said, oh, that's interesting. So I went back that day at night and I watched your April 1st meeting. That was a previous meeting. And everybody, you were talking about, what was it, the anniversary? And you had a presentation there. And it was a great presentation. And at the end, it was a long meeting, two and a half hours, I think, at the end of it. And you had talked about how much you loved this community. I think I made notes about it. You talked about the garden club and flowers out front. You talked about how the people, all the people donate their time and give to this community and how much you loved it. And your enthusiasm made me explore it more. And I did. Norfolk is very similar to Mendon. It's just a bigger version of Mendon. We have a lot of the same problems, a lot of the same opportunities. So to me, it almost feels like the home I'm in now, just a bigger version of it with more to do, which is great because I like to do a lot. And I think there's a lot, there's been a lot of commercial growth in Mendon. And I've weathered that with the previous town administrator. I know there's probably not as much commercial here from my research. And that's something that is interesting to me. You know, new people coming in, new companies to talk to, taking advantage of the CPC, the CPA, economic development that way, bringing people in through trails, paths, just getting people in the community can help build up the community, bring interest in the community. Because it's like Mendon. It's not an easy way to get here from the highway. You know, we're kind of, we're close enough to the highway, but it's not, you know, like a Bellingham or Franklin where you're going to see a warehouse because you don't have that access. So you have to be creative in the development that you bring in here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sure. So you talked about, you know, your experience when you walked in and they had to slash 12% of the budget across departments. We also have an issue here where, you know, we've been using free cash to balance our budget. So how would you address that without being so drastic to say to every department, you must cut 12%? What would you do to kind of stabilize our budget for a short term and then long term, given your experience in, you know, managing budgets and capital improvement projects?
It's a great question. I mean, free cash, DLS never recommends using free cash. Without, actually, I've dug into the budget, but DLS-wise, I've looked at the DLS site, I've looked at, you know, the past three years, $159,000, $840,000, and then $1.1 million last year. So you can obviously see that it's not a stable form of your operating budget. It's going to increase dramatically, most of the time 50%, because that, it's a moving target. If you're using $200,000 in one year, it's not $200,000 next year because you have raises, you have health insurance costs, you have expenses. It's all going to multiply. So there is something that to look at. You guys know that there's something that to look at. I think in the first 90 days, 60 days, there's going to be a lot for anybody who's going to come in and handle. You're going to be, if Mike Gallagher hasn't already started, you know, sending out budget letters. All the departments should stop preparing their budgets. So you're going to have to look at the budget as a whole. I think to stabilize it right now, I think Mike did a great job stabilizing it in general. He didn't spend a whole lot at the spring, at the fall town meeting. He made sure you saved some of that free cash because you don't know what this year's going to look like. And when you're using that type of free cash, I guess it would get the, working with the financial team, put everybody in one room together. The advisory board tied, get the treasurer, the collector, the assessor. And we work on this collaboratively to figure out, hey, what is our issue? Where is it coming from? Where are, where's our scope? So it's first just figuring out the scope of what we're dealing with. At the same time, while you're preparing everybody's budgets and putting that all together to present a budget for annual town meeting. So there is a lot to do, but I think it's going to be an analysis. It's going to be spreadsheets, data. You have to look at it all. And then you're not going to be able to solve it in one year. That's a, that's a big number. You may have to use free cash again, but you don't want to keep doubling it every year. You want to get it under control. So I think the first thing would be just to figure out what the issue is collaboratively together and then figure out, what's the plan long-term? You know, we can't solve this probably in a year. It took three years to create this problem. It may take three years to get out of it. And then come up with that plan and try to stick to it. And it could lead to, there's so many options on the table this could lead to. Looking at the budget in general, you know, is there, are we at a point where the levy can't, just can't handle the services that they, that we provide? And those are tough decisions that you're elected to make and that I have to recommend to you. Are we at a tipping point? Do we have to look at all options here? You know, do we have to look at cuts? Do we have to look at overrides? I mean, no one wants to hear overrides. I know there hasn't been an override since 2006. I'm not saying there should be an override, but all options should be on the table to solve this problem. And then get it out there to everybody. Because in every town, it's not just this town, it's a lack of involvement. You go to any spring meeting, fall meeting, you're lucky to get 100 people there. I watched yours, I think, yeah, you had maybe under 100. Ours, we had 64. So, and you think of 64, we have five Select Board members, so take five off of there. We have five FinCon members there. So really, who's there? It's really like 50 people. And same thing with yours, take all the people that actually are involved, the number is low. So you have to communicate what you're actually doing. You have to have some type of outreach to let everybody know. We have so many avenues today with social media to get it out there. And maybe even, I've seen other towns do videos, town manager videos on a regular basis to get out information on a monthly update, let you know where the budget's going, let you know where things are going. Because you will have to get to that point where you have to make those tough decisions, you know? And it's really the voters who ultimately make the tough decisions, they get to vote. But the services that they enjoy now, do they want to keep them? Or, and how do they want to keep them? And how can we impact the residents the less? That's what this is all about, the residents. And those are, those are tough decisions to make. But you have to make them. And you have to have leaders who aren't going to make them. And then live with them. Because there will be repercussions. Everybody's not going to be happy with the decision that you make.
Right. And so it looks like you spend a lot of your free time watching Norfolk videos. So you've done your research, so you get the gold star for that.
Well, you know, I was disappointed that the Citizens Academy didn't come out till like 4:00 in the morning. So when I took my morning walk, I put my AirPods in and I took an hour and a half walk this morning instead of an hour. And I didn't get to watch it, but I heard it. And it was difficult watching it when they were moving puzzle pieces around. I'm thinking to myself, well, what are they doing?
Done your homework.
Thank you. So if we could talk to the people that you work with, what are three words they would use to describe you?
Three words? I would say reliable, honest, resourceful.
That's interesting. Thank you. If you were chosen to be our next town administrator, what do you think would be the greatest opportunity for you? And what would be the greatest challenge for you?
I think there's a lot of opportunities here. I know I made some notes. 2024 hospital in town. Southwood Hospital Development Agreement. It seems like there's a huge opportunity there to do something in the town. I couldn't find a ton about what you're actually working out with it. I think you're in the process of working out. But I think that would be a big project for the town manager or town administrator to work on. I think that's a great opportunity for the town to maybe work on some issues that were addressed in the master plan. Economic development, commercial growth, affordable housing. I think it's, wages have gone up 31% in Norfolk, but house prices have gone up 75. That's an issue. People want to age in place. And it's tough to do that in today's economy. And I think that's something that in every town, it's not just unique to Norfolk. It's happening in Mendon right now, too. Those are opportunities. Because those are things that are actually rewarding, to make sure that people can stay in the town that they grew up in and, or moved to and keep their families here. And I think that's the most important thing. So challenge, oh, sorry.
Go right ahead.
I was going to go with challenges.
But I want to think about challenges, not challenges for Norfolk, but challenges for you.
Yes. I haven't held this title before. I haven't held this specific title. So for me, there's going to be a learning curve. It's going to be, I think, no different for me than it was when I was the fire chief and the Emergency Management Director all of a sudden and helping out as an acting town administrator. I think it's going to be the same thing. I've been through it. I know it's tough. I know it requires a lot of time. It's those extra hours. And I think those, that's going to be my challenge. I think it's something that I'm going to have to put a lot of time into. And I wonder if I'll put more time into it because being a police chief, you put just as much time in. You never know when you're going to get called out. You have no stability. I've done that my whole entire life. And I'm willing to put the work in. And for me, being on call here 24 hours as a town administrator, probably be a break compared to being a police chief 24 hours. It really will. I think about, I went to a birthday party, 40th birthday party, a couple of weeks ago, and we had a missing person. So the whole night, that was what was on my head. And then I dropped my wife off at home. And 11 o'clock at night, I went to the house to help the detectives out till 1:00 in the morning. And then at 6:00 in the morning, I was back at it. So, you know, I look at throughout my career, that's one thing that I'll benefit from. But on the other end, I have the time that I'm willing to put in here in different ways. So I think that's a challenge for me. I think with my experience, I'm an outside-the-box candidate, but I think my proven track record proves that it's doable. It's more than doable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Yeah. One of the questions I asked, what are some of your strength, what's one of your strengths and one of your weaknesses?
Strengths and weaknesses? I think pulling teams together, leading teams, putting leading teams together, working with teams, being compassionate with the employees and understanding, understand them as a person, you know? I don't think I always did that. I think when I became a chief, I was a young chief. I was chief at 39 years old. I think I was more of that type militant chief when I first came in. And I had to learn some hard lessons, make some mistakes along the way and learn that in today's day, day in society, it's more about building relationships and working with everybody to make sure that we all are heading in the right direction. Because if they don't respect you, if they don't understand you, they're not going to follow you. And you're not going to be a successful leader or manager. I mean, they're two separate things, but you're not going to be either one of them. And I had to learn that the hard way. So I think my experience, you know, I think that's a, that's a strength. Was the other one weakness? Because I had to write it down. Because if they don't respect you, if they don't understand you, they're not going to follow you. And you're not going to be a successful leader or manager. I mean, they're two separate things, but you're not going to be either one of them. And I had to learn that the hard way. So I, I think my experience, you know, I, I think that's, that's a strength. Was the other one weakness? Because I didn't write it down. Weakness. Go back to not being, not being in this position, something new. That is definitely a weakness for me. It's a weakness that's glaring, obviously, because of the title I hold right now. And, I think, there's plenty of weaknesses we all have. I can highlight more if you want.
So you've obviously spent a good chunk of your career right in Mendon and have held multiple roles, so I don't necessarily see that as a weakness because you understand the town from multiple angles. And you served as an assistant town administrator, so you understand some aspects of the role, right? So, but my question is more about, you know, the culture. Obviously, you worked somewhere for that long and you know the culture, you know the players, you know how things work. You would be coming into a new town, new environment. So how would you build the, you know, those relationships here in Norfolk? And how would you kind of understand how our town functions and operates?
It's a loaded question.
What would you do, I guess, to do that?
Actually, I can remember all that. Yeah, culture is, is tough to judge. You have to be aware of it and, and it's hard to change sometimes, too. So not to say I would change culture here, I'm not talking about that at all, but Mendon didn't always have a great culture in certain departments. And changing it was hard to do. It's a lot of digging deep into what are the root issues? How do you, how do you move forward and make sure everybody has their needs taken care of properly? To understand culture here, I think culture's probably going to be a lot like Mendon. It's a small town, it's a bigger scale. I think you're going to have a lot of the same players, just a different rodeo, right? It always comes down to communication, building relationships. You have to reach out, you have to make sure that you stay constant, your number's always available to every, every employee here, not just the department heads, anybody who might need to talk to you. I don't want anybody breaking chain of command, but if there's something that happens and they need to talk to me directly, there's nothing wrong with that, as long as it's proper. And getting to know people on a personal level, there's nothing wrong with that. I think in the past, I never did, in the beginning of my career, but I learned that that wasn't the right strategy. We have, in the police department, I, I do it on the day shift. I tried in cars, the night, night shift to do it, too. I put everybody's birthdays in, in my phone. And when there's a birthday, they know it's coming now, it's not a surprise anymore. I'll send the detective down, give my credit card, go get an ice cream cake at Dairy Queen, and we'll all come in for lunch just to have that. It's just those small little things people remember. If you remember their birthday, if you remember something, do something special for them and, and it makes them human, it makes them a person, it makes them not just an employee. Because you want to be someplace where everybody enjoys the work. And culture, when you create a culture like that, it grows, I think. Other people, it's contagious. And the ones who are not following it, if, if there's people who are, you know, the other side where they're just miserable all the time, they're going to either fall into the culture if you can create a great culture, or they're going to leave. So learning here is just going to be time. It's going to be, I'm not going to know enough in nine days, it's going to be a year, two years. And it's going to depend who's here. I know you have a lot to turn over. So I'm, I'm sure the culture here is, everybody's figuring out the culture here. It's changing probably a little bit, too. You know, you have new positions that have been filled, DPW, police chief. So I think we'll all be working through that together. And in some instance, I think that would be a benefit because we're all starting almost from the same place to try to figure this all out together. Maybe give us a common ground to start working together.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. How do you handle, well, I'm going to skip that. How do you handle difficult conversations or conflict in the workplace?
Straight on. That's the only way to deal with it. Address the issue right away and properly. And use HR. A lot of times, we didn't have HR, so I would be doing it myself. But it depends what type of conflict we're talking about. If it's something serious, then HR gets involved. If it's just something small, there's no reason we can't have a conversation about. Life's too short. Nothing is too big of an issue that we can't sit down and talk about it. But that's, I address it right away. There is no waiting around. Sometimes I'll even, there's been conflicts at the police department where it's a weekend, I'll come in, I'll sit with the people and I'll deal with it. Just so I know it's going to bother me for the whole weekend, too. So if it's bothering me for the whole weekend, it's going to bother them for the whole weekend. And no one wants to have their off time thinking about work constantly. So it's just addressing it right away, finding the, the issue, resolving it, coming to a conclusion. It may not always be easy. There may be something bad comes from, or maybe something good. But either way, you resolve it quickly and we can all move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a question?
So you obviously have a lot of experience working with police and fire, right? But not so much with schools, or maybe you do, I'm not sure. So how would you strengthen collaboration between the town and the schools? Schools represent a significant portion of the town budget. And so how, how would you manage that relationship?
That's a great question. So I do have a good relationship with the schools. My relationship has stemmed with the superintendent. So when I first became chief, we had one superintendent, we have another superintendent now. Her and I have a great relationship. Whenever it snows, I know I'm going to get a text at 4:30, 5:00 in the morning. But that's not the only time we'll talk. You know, if there's any type of issue that comes up in general with a school, we have a school resource officer assigned to, we have a regional school. We have the elementary and middle school in our town. And if issues come up, her and I always address them. We have parking issues at the school and we have a night officer who loves to write parking tickets, so her and I are always talking about that to resolve that. So we do have a, a relationship in general. And then financially, we have talked finances. So it's a regional school district. It's between Upton and Mendon, so the finances go through the school committee. We, when I first started, our resource officer, we had a small contribution from the school to take care of that in my budget. And we've negotiated through the years to bring that up to a reasonable amount, half the officer's salary. So I have dealt with finances and it's just, again, we got there gradually and we worked together. It's going to be building with a superintendent. It's almost they're going to be the counterpart, right, of the town administrator, the town manager. If you don't have a relationship there, nothing's going to happen. The school committee's great, too, but that's really his counterpart or her counterpart, like you would be my counterpart. So it would be more appropriate for us to be working through things together and to look at long-term, you know, look at, look at a long-term plan with the school, too. We've done that in Mendon. You know, this is where you need to get to, you know? No, we can't do a million and a half override this year, but, you know, can we work in over the next few years with new growth? Can we split new growth for the next three years to accomplish your goal and accomplish the town's goals? It's just them understanding, almost like an employee, understand what we, we need and what their needs are and working together to solve them. Because we always say school and town, but there's no school and town, it's all of us. It's a community. You know, we're all one, so we all should act as one and work as one.
Thank you. So we have, one of our many openings in terms of staff is an assistant town administrative position slash human resources. And so that position would be, need to be filled by whoever we choose to be in that role. What characteristics would you be looking for, for somebody in that role?
Probably someone a little bit different than me, you know, so we can complement each other. Probably more focused on HR. I have done a lot of HR through my career, Mendon didn't have an HR director until 2020, somewhere around there. So I've had to deal with, with HR, but not to the extent that a true HR professional does. So I would look for someone who can be, I would say, a, a great background in HR, great communication skills to deal with the employees and benefits. Someone, I'd probably, I have a lot of friends that are in this field. I've gravitated and because of relationships that I've built, I'd probably tap out there and see, hey, what's out there, who's available and who might be looking to make a move. I think it's most importantly just looking for a good person. That's kind of the basis of my hiring. It sounds silly, but my first half of the, my career as a police officer, as a chief, I would go through the standard questions. I'd bring a sheet in and ask all the officers, soon to be officers, if you were on a midnight shift and you saw your partner steal a candy bar, what do you do? Like, we would ask those standard questions. And it just wasn't the way we should be questioning. We just did it because we did it. At one point, I just pulled the lieutenant and said, we're going to do something different. And I would ask questions that would, that would help me find out who the person is. Because if you understand who a person is, I don't have to ask if you're going to steal a candy bar, I know if you're going to steal a candy bar. So I, I think that'd be the same approach to any hiring that I would do. Finding someone who would complement my style and then finding someone who's just a good person, silly as it sounds.
So on the heels of that, can you tell us about a mistake or a misstep that you've made and what you learned from it or what came from it?
Yeah. I've made plenty in my career. I think early on as a chief, I think I talked about, I was, I was a little too rough around the edges. I think I went in trying to prove that I was the boss. And it was, I made mistakes along the way that broke down relationships and actually the culture that I was trying to improve, I heard it. Instead of going two steps forward, I went three steps back and then had to go five steps forward to, to correct it all. So I think my approach now as a leader and a manager is, is much different. It's more about personal relationships and it's not about being the boss.
How did you know you were going three steps back?
Morale. It's pretty obvious when morale starts going down the tubes. You can tell when people start calling in sick, when people start whispering, they talk around the coffee. And because no matter how morale is, you're always going to have officers or, or employees that do get along with you and are going to tell you, and hopefully you have those relationships and say, hey, things aren't going the right way. And you have to be open enough to, to listen and to try to understand and if there is an issue, fix it. There may not always be issues. There may be people who just aren't happy at their job. But having that, and I would have to find it here, that person that could be honest with me and not, you know, just want to make the boss happy or make the administrator happy, let me know what's going on. Let me know my faults because I would do the same with them. Because that's how you build a, a true team. I mean, you're not going to move forward if you don't know what you're doing wrong. So that's why you build the relationships and have an honest, have honest, open conversations with people. And, and issues came around discipline. And issues came around, when I would discipline people, maybe I could have taken a different step. Maybe I could have took a gentler approach. And I do now. I look at, in the beginning, I had a lot of grievances. I don't think I've had a grievance in five years now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So can you tell us, talk to us a little bit about maybe some of your experience you've had writing grants, either for, you know, for the police station or fire station or any other connections that you think might be helpful in working with the state in order to move some of these projects that we have forward? For instance, we lack wastewater treatment facilities. And, you know, there are lots of, there's state funding out there that I think we could be more proactive about applying and, and for and getting. So do you have any experience in that area?
Yes. So when I was a sergeant and we had that, the great financial crisis, I took over regional dispatch for Mendon. We actually had our own at one time. It was Mendon, Hope Dale and Millville. And there were a lot of grants that were involved with that. I wrote all the competitive grants and then the incentive grants. Those were just, they were going to give them to you anyways because we were regional. I just had to fill the paperwork out, the 60 pages and then drive them up to Dorton to give them to, to E-911. But there were a lot of competitive grants that I did actually write and draft myself. I think I highlighted in my resume, we were able to build a radio tower in Mendon through grant funding through 911. I wrote that grant. We were able to create an emergency management center in the new police station. I was, I wrote that grant. So I do have a lot of extensive experience with 911 grants and public safety grants. We, we do the collector tickets, all those grants I used to write. I've got to the point now where a lot of them I give to the offices because I want them to learn how to do it because I think it's a good tool for them in the future. State connections are always great. I have local connections with my current state senators and reps. I know they're different in Norfolk, but I don't think that's hard to, to have those reps meet the other reps and introduce you. The new police station that we built, the six and a half million dollar police station, we received several earmarks from our state senator and rep. So they are grants, but they're ways of getting more money for the town. If you don't ask, they're not going to give it to you. So if you're a pain in the butt and you keep asking for earmarks, they'll keep putting them down and eventually maybe get a few of them. Sewer, the prison, we're talking about, right? So the prison has sewer.
Yes.
And that's something that you wanted to connect in because they have a plant there.
Right.
I think that was actually in my AirPods this morning.
One of the meetings you watched?
I think this was in the AirPods this morning. Or, or no, maybe one of the other ones. Yeah, so trying to tap into that because that would be huge for downtown. I think it was during the exercise where they talked about how, you know, every acre lot has a septic system, but you can't do that with businesses, you can't do that with restaurants. I think they talked about putting a fine dining restaurant somewhere in the center. It's hard to do without that. I think you don't know unless you pick up a phone and call. And I'm not afraid to call people. I remember watching something a long time ago, Steve Jobs, when he was a kid, he said, you know, I wanted to build a computer and at 10 years old, I called up this IBM exec who lived in California with me and I asked him for the parts and he gave them to me. He said, you're never going to know unless you make that phone call. If they say no, it's no, but I can be persistent. And I was when we regionalized with your regional. Back in 2018, 2019 is when we started the process to actually dissolve our regional and join your regional. When I became chief, we, Hope Dale had got out of our regional system, they just didn't want to be part of it anymore. There were some differences between the chiefs at the time and they withdrew, the state let them withdraw. They still don't have their own 911. It actually is a ringed down system that goes from Upton, but they got their own dispatch back. And at that time, now we just had Millville and Mendon. And when I took over the finances, it became a financial burden. We couldn't support two towns and two dispatchers, especially with a town as small as Millville. And then Millville started threatening to leave our system and go to Blackstone. So at that point, I reached out to Frank Posniak, I bugged him about options. And we looked at different options in Worcester County and then we looked at options here. And we were able to negotiate a pretty good deal for Mendon to come. And Millville had to come at that point, they didn't have a choice because Blackstone didn't want them. So I wasn't going to take the risk for Mendon to say, let's keep doing what we're going to do and hope Millville doesn't leave because if they left, it, we would have had to lay off people. So it's just asking, being persistent, making those phone calls and then constantly making those phone calls.
Yeah.
Because eventually it's a squeaky wheel, right? They're going to want you to stop calling them so they might give you something.
Yeah, and it's nice to hear that you're, you're, you have experience working with other towns in, in a regional system because obviously we have that here.
Yeah.
And there are shared services that I think we could do, you know,
Yeah.
collaborate with our neighboring towns on to help save money. So that's great.
Sorry, should have been being prepared. So in, in an organization, organizations are sort of a, a combination of processes and procedures and exceptions. And how do you manage that, the balance between those things?
Obviously, for my career, I'm all about process. Like, that's been my whole career is about process. Accreditation policies, you want to make sure that you have a good process in general because that's going to lead to good procedures. And procedures are really where it's at. Like, that's a rewarding part of all of it, right? Where you see what comes about from what you've created. So if you have good procedures in place, the process is going to follow. I think just making sure that your policies are good, like, that's why we did accreditation. That's why we completed that, you know, long task, two-year task, to make sure our officers see the end of it and they, they're protected with what they do. Their policies are good, so when they do their procedures on the road, we know we're not going to be looking at lawsuits. It's the same thing, I think, on this level. You want to make sure that it's not, that may be something you look for in the next assistant town administrator, someone who is a policy writer. Not just HR, but that, that aspect of it because you want to make sure you have good policies. You may have great policies, I didn't get to that part of the research. But that may be something that, you know, you address and then, like I said, the process follows from there. And that's the part that really matters, you know, the outcome.
Thank you.
How do you see the role of town administrator in, in terms of interacting with the select board? What do you think the function should be? What do you think the relationship should look like?
I think it changes depending on the board. So I'm a strong chief in Mendon under Master General Law, so my direct report is the select board and always has been the select board. Earlier in my career, I had a great relationship, I still have a great relationship, but I had more of a personal relationship. I would get calls at 10 o'clock at night from a select board member and I didn't mind. You know, if there's, there's something bothering that much, call me. I prefer to talk and call instead of text and email. I will adapt to whatever anybody likes. I've adapted to boards that like that. I just like more of a personal touch. It's hard to read an email, it's hard to read a text. But I think it has to be, it has, it has to be professional and personal. Because the personal part of it is, this is your town, you're passionate about it. There's going to be things that you want accomplished and I'm your avenue to accomplish that. Through the department heads, through the employees. I think it's a collaborative relationship. It's great if the board's on the same page and that's why I said it depends on the board. Board, if you get a board that's on the same page, I've had that, it's great. Right now, Mendon, they're all on the same page. They, they all work well together and it's a great board to deal with. For a period of time, we didn't have a town administrator for a year or two and I dealt with the board on a regular basis too. I deal less now that we have a new town administrator. But I think we'd be talking a lot. I think you probably know a lot about my family life and you probably know a lot about your family life. Because it just happens, right? You know, hey, I gotta take the kids to football right now or I'm coaching football. Can I call you back in a little bit? You're just going to know stuff about me and the same thing, I'm going to call you and you're going to tell me, you know, my kids are doing this or I'm out doing this. So I'm going to learn stuff about you. And I think, you know, we're all here for the right reason. You're here, you ran for office, it's tough to do. You're here because the constituents you want to represent in this community and you want the best for it. And I think as any employee that you hire, you want them to want the best for the town, whether they live here or not. And I think that is where a relationship gets built and I think we're going to have common ground. And we're not always going to agree too, right? You're going to say things, I'm going to say things. I think you might not want to go that direction. You might not want to do this, but ultimately it's your say. And if you want to do it, I respect you and that's what I'm going to do, period. You know, that's the power of military part of me. You're the boss. You were the ones elected by the people.
Do you have any questions for us?
Oh, yours are done?
The clock says yeah.
Nice. You know, I don't think I have direct questions. Trying to think of any things I wanted to address, but I think we addressed, we had a pretty good conversation in general. Just wanted to obviously talk about the elephant in the room, that I'm a police chief. The screening committee asked, you know, how do you work with the current police chief? I think no different than any town administrator. If I came here to be your town administrator, I'm your town administrator. If I wanted to be the police chief here, I would have applied back in summer, right? Or I would have applied to any of the police chief jobs that are open right now because there are a lot of them, just like there are town manager jobs. I'm not running for anything. It's not that I don't love being a police chief. I think I beat a dead horse there. It's just something different. I, twenty-nine years is a long time. I started very young. If I finish off as a police chief, I'll have no regrets. But to not look at this at this point in my career, I think I'd regret it. I have a lot of managers that are friends who have kind of pushed me along this way. And I remember my manager originally, Kim Nguyen, when I became a police chief, she was like, you're not always going to be a police chief. And I said, what are you talking about? You know, I mean, she's like, nah, you're not going to be. She's like, just like when someone told me I'm not going to be. And she's been a great support through this too. So I just wanted to point out that I can make that transition. I think a leader and a manager, they can take over any position. And for me, if I go anywhere, it's the next step. There is nothing after, like if I, if I want to help out more our community, the next step is the town administrator, town manager. So that's what I'm pursuing and looking at right now. And I am being very particular. I've had managers and recruiting firms telling me to apply for everything. Just get something and go somewhere and then go somewhere after that, have two years. I think you can see from my career, I, I get pretty set in my ways. I've been married twenty-five years. I've been a police officer in Mendon for twenty-nine years. I originally started actually as a dispatcher in Blackstone and I was going to be a police officer there. I actually got sponsored through the academy through them. When I came out, there wasn't a job available, so I had to find a job. Mendon was hiring. Back then it was actually tough to get a job. There were fifty applicants for the, for the position. Now I'm lucky to get one for, one for two positions. But Mendon, I don't want to say they took a chance on me. I think they made an investment in me. They, and that's kind of where I think I am now. If you make an investment in me, you should get return dividends. And I think Mendon has got their return dividends from me. And I'm not looking for a chance from anybody. I'm looking for someone to look at me as an investment. Because I'm not someone who bounces around. I'm being particular for a reason because if I go somewhere, that's the last part of my career. I'm not looking to keep moving around. Yeah, I just, I, I get pretty sentimental about the place I'm at and I end up, it may be the old school part of me. Being the youngest of nine, my father was very old school. So he was the type of person that when he, he worked for the state as a social worker and he stayed there until he retired. He didn't go anywhere else. He didn't go to any other jobs. My mother was the same type of way and I think it's just, you get comfortable and you feel good about the things you do. Mendon, we've done a lot of good things to the team. And I'm just looking to go, if I can help out somewhere else in another team, build some other things. Get some, my name's on some more police stations. I don't know. Because it feels good when you do things like that.
Well, you don't have to build a new police station or a fire station. You come here, I can guarantee you that.
But that's it. I just wanted to get that out of the way. And I want to thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank MRI and the screening process and the screening committee. I think they did a great job. Thank you for, for putting me forward and I appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate you interviewing me and the opportunity here. So, and I wish you the best of luck in whatever you decide. I know it's been a long night and you probably just want to get out of here. I could talk all night if you wanted me to.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did Kevin come all the way through here?
Thank you.
Do we want a five-minute recess? Or no?
No.
No, she says no. What do you think?
Yeah, I can go.
You good?
Yes.
Oh, you need a recess?
No, I'm fine.
Screening committee did an excellent job.
They did, they were an excellent job. They did do an excellent job. So I guess what I would like to recommend, what makes sense to me right now is to go through, go back to the beginning candidate and just sort of share out what we think were strengths of each of the candidates. And so just sort of say what we think the strengths are and, and then we'll go from there. Does that sound okay?
Okay.
So Joe, go, what is, what does his business card say? Go get Joe?
Yes.
Go get Joe. I think one of the things I thought was a real strength for him was his vision. I loved the hundred and fifty-two days till town meeting. Like he, he knows where he's going and I thought the vision was really strong. He, it was interesting that one of his three words was goofy. I thought that was kind of revealing and interesting. I think he had a clear sense of like, don't overburden the levy and this is, I just liked his vision. I thought the vision was really nice. What do you guys think?
So obviously one of his strengths is that he's been a town administrator.
The only one of the.
And he's, has thirty years in municipal government, which, you know, obviously has the experience. And he also has the, it seems like he has a lot of financial experience in terms of working on budgets. He mentioned, you know, how he had to get creative in Carwich. And he really emphasized like communication, which I thought was something that, you know, we, we need here.
Yes, the serial meetings, I thought that was fabulous.
Yeah, so those were my, my takeaways and also the wastewater component because that's something that we obviously need to focus on here. So the fact that he has experience getting that up and running in a town, I think is obviously an asset. So those were my takeaways from, from his strengths.
And your takeaways? No takeaways?
Not really, no. I guess, yeah.
Okay, so we know you're not sold on, on that one. All right, were there any concerns with him, with his experience? Or any hesitance, cause?
Well, it's a little tough. You know, like he did say about the stuff on the internet, you know, you can't really rely on it.
Yeah.
But it is out there and, you know, he's had some trouble in different, a couple of different towns.
Yeah.
But he did try to address them and you don't really know, but.
Okay, so those were your causes, cause for concern?
Yes.
The things that are out there.
I, I also saw the things on the internet. I think the way I thought about that was that the screening committee obviously saw that too. And, and so I was feeling confident that the screening committee had vetted that to their satisfaction. And so that helped me kind of say, and then listening to him talk, I appreciated his honesty about, these are the things and this is what I meant and this is what it is. And so I appreciated that.
Oh, no, I did appreciate his candidacy. He brought it out and told us about it. He wasn't trying to hide it and, like you said, the screening committee knew about it and felt, you know, I'm not, it's just a little concern of mine, that's all.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a public mistake, right? It's a very public mistake. And that's real. Yeah, I thought, I thought he said a lot of interest, he's like, the differences make it fun. Like he, he's, I, how he looked at the job was like it would be challenging and the differences would make it fun. He said charm is subjective. I thought that was so interesting. I, I thought that was interesting. So I thought he had a lot of experience to bring us. He's the only one who's done the job before and his vision is like, what is the truth of the committee? He was very, his vision was very, very strong.
He seemed a little polished though. Like on paper, he's the ideal candidate, just based on his experience. But then in hearing him, kind of like his response was like, oh, I didn't have that on my talking points.
That's right.
You know, he seemed like very polished, like he had his answers, which is not necessarily a bad thing. But I think the other two candidates were just a little bit more authentic to me.
I would, I would agree with that, a little bit more genuine. But also to your point, he is the only one who's done the job before.
Yeah.
You know, in full. And he does, the wastewater piece is attractive. And I think the vision piece to me is, is really, that strong sense of vision, the hundred and fifty-two days till town meeting and what is the core of this town? I thought, I thought that was very, very interesting and the way he treated people. But yet he also had the financial, like he talked about the forecasting. I love the idea of adding a narrative content with ClearGov. Like that was really clever. And, and it reflects an intention to communicate, right? So I think there were some strong things there. He was a little polished. He was a little polished. Shall we move on to the next one? Rob. Well, the, the big, the big differences, of course, that he lives in town. And so he lives in town and he's lived in town a very, very long time. I think that's an asset and that's a, it's two things at once, right?
Yes, but I think it's more of an asset than negative. I mean, Jack Hathaway did it for a long time and he did a, a great job at it. And I don't think he, I don't think he really had that much of a problem with people coming up and baller-ing him or, or be, or not so much that, it's, people wanting to do things because they were friends with him and all that. You know, I look at it as, Rob lives in the community, he's been in the community and ever since he got here, he's been, he's been a selectman, he's on the advisory board. And he's done a lot in the community. It just.
I think we should take that out of the equation. I, I don't think we should even consider that. I mean, yes, that could, the relationships are the relationship.
Well, I'm not saying the relationship.
Just based on his experience.
Based on his experience.
Based on his experience, do we think he's a good person for this role? I mean, he obviously has enthusiasm, he has the passion. He has poured his hours of volunteering into the community. But based on his experience, does he have any experience working in municipal government? Does he have any experience? I mean, he's sat on boards for the town, but that's different than being the town administrator.
Well.
So I think we need to consider that and take.
But, but he was a selectman of the town, so he didn't just sit on boards. I mean, the town administrator.
I'm not saying that one way or the other. I'm just saying we should take the fact that he's a resident of Norfolk off the table.
Okay, that's fine.
Should take it off the table and just consider his, his resume and his experience.
So I think his experience, he seems to be a very strong problem solver. I thought that really came across. I think he, he would take the responsibility of the job. He's, he's the only one of our candidates who really understood or really talked, understood is not the right way to say it, who really talked about adaptive change versus technical change, right? Like saying this isn't a cute problem, but this is a chronic problem. Though we heard that a little bit with our, with this last candidate. So he was kind of realistic about saying these changes take time and these changes can be, have a shorter fix and, and seemed to have an understanding about that. I think, I think in terms of his experience, it's in problem solving, team building, problem solving, not necessarily in municipal. Though he has a ton of experience at the state level, but that's not the same as local.
Yeah, I mean, I, I love what he said about, you know, digging into our finances, doing the crash budget exercise. He obviously understands the problems that are, that the town faces. And I do think he, you know, he has the skills. But again, I'm just going back to, he doesn't have any experience working in municipal, in municipal. And he's the only one that doesn't have that. I mean, obviously the police, the third candidate has, has different roles, but he's at least had the municipal town government experience.
I'm, I'm doing the mental exercise of considering him as a candidate, not as somebody who lived in town. So excuse me.
Yeah, we need to take that out.
Just like trying to separate that from what I, from what Mike, so I'm just taking a minute to sort of think about that. Can we talk about the last one and then we'll come back?
Yep.
Yeah.
So I couldn't tell, is he Dave or David? David? Do you want to start?
Well, I think he definitely had a lot of strong points. I mean, he was, it seems like he's a very good leader. I mean, he did have municipal experience, but it's on a, a different level. He didn't have, deal with many department heads because he was the chief of police or the fire chief.
He was also assistant town administrator though, which is, which is.
Which is basically.
Yes. He was completely the most prepared of all of our, he was so prepared.
Clearly invested in, I mean, he started doing his research in April when he knew that the position would potentially open up. He's done his research on the town. I mean, to me, he seemed more prepared than the first candidate who has had all that experience as a town administrator.
Yep.
He knew what to look for. And I don't necessarily think just because he, like he said, he's the police, he's the police chief and that's a negative, but I don't see that. I mean, he, yes, he was the police chief, but he's had several roles within the town over the years, including as Manita mentioned, the assistant town administrator, the, in the director of emergency management. He's had to deal with different department heads in those roles. And he also has experience writing grants and seeking out additional funding, which is something we need to do better of as a town. So I liked him. I also thought he, he seemed like he would be a great leader. He seems like he understands people and how to build the relationships, which I think is a value add and something that would benefit us as a town in the town hall. So those are my thoughts on him.
And he was reflective. I, I found him to be reflective. And he did talk about changing culture is hard and that it takes time. So he, he did talk a little bit about that. I liked what he talked about not breaking the chain of command. So he understood in an organization about like staying in your lane and I thought that that was, and the idea of, of growing culture. I think celebrating birthdays and that kind of stuff would be good for us in our town. I liked his tenacity about keep asking for earmarks. Like we could use some earmarks and we're not getting, like you keep reading about Runtum's earmarks and we're not getting earmarks. And so I, I liked his answer too about the assistant TA, like somebody different from me, somebody who would be honest with me. And though I liked with Rob, I really liked how he talked about growing people. I thought that that was a real of.
Positive, yeah.
Yeah, growing, building people up. I, I thought that that was, like seemed to be a core philosophy and that was very, very interesting to me. But that is clearly what's happening. He didn't use the same kind of words, but with this David is clearly happening as well, that he's building teams. And like he did say, I have my police officers do that now so that they grow in their capacity to do that. Because you do want somebody who grows the people around them.
Yeah, and also, I mean, he does, he has a background in accounting. He has a finance background, which is why he's been able to be successful in these roles because he understands how to manage a budget. And so I think that's important as well for the, for someone in this role. So for me, the, the two are David and Rob. On paper, I thought Joe would be the best candidate, but after hearing all three of them, I think for me, it's between those two.
And I, I would have to agree. For me, it would be between those, those two as well. And I think, because I think we had a more authentic interview with those two and I think that. I don't know, I liked, first, I liked all three. I, I felt like the screening committee.
Did an amazing job bringing all three.
They did amazing, the three candidates, I was worried about having viable candidates and I think we have three viable candidates. I think financially.
Great candidates.
Yes. I think that if we're looking, like if we look at one strand of what we're looking for, I, I guess I would, I agree with you. I liked the financial piece of the first guy. I felt like he had, was going to be able to offer. He understood some things and he was going to be able to offer, but I, I agree. So are we agreeing that the, we've narrowed it down to two?
Yes.
Are we agreeing we've narrowed it, so we've narrowed it to two? Are we agreeing we've narrowed it, so we've narrowed it to two? There, we've narrowed it to two. So, now, we have to, one of the things I, I asked Amanda to bring was, like, the challenges, what were the challenge statements for Norfolk? Like, what are the challenges that Norfolk is facing? And I'm just going to read some of these bullets, increasing school populations is resulting in space and, and need for growth in the schools, current or soon-to-be housing development that's happening in our community, limited infrastructure to place, um, to, for people to age in places, what I think that, that's what they're trying to say, and the small business, financial stability and sustainability, Southwood Hospital, working with the MBTA, though I feel like that is going in a good direction, staff department and employee retention and recruitment strategy, and guide the implementation of the newly adopted master plan, is on here. And I think what isn't on here, but we definitely, um, need to support the culture in this building, like, the, the culture of the, the working group in this building. So, under the, like, those are sort of the broad sweeping needs, and then we look at these two candidates, neither of them have done the job before, so that's interesting that we've narrowed it to two people without experience. They both seem like they wouldn't, um, we really don't want somebody to come in for three years and go, because we had Justin for three, though we kind of knew Justin was a climber, and that we wouldn't get to keep him for long. And, and Blythe was here for three, so we really were hoping for some stability for our staff, and it seems like both of these candidates will do that. We're looking for somebody who has the financial knowledge to help us do that deep dive and creative, look at our finances, creative and, um, accurate, like, look at our finances to solve problems with our finances. I think they can both do that. Yes?
I, I would agree with that.
I like, I, I like them both.
Right, we can't hire them both, though.
No.
Yeah.
That would be, um...
Maybe if you can see one wants to be an assistant, then we can grab both that way, but...
I don't think...
One's got HR experience, though.
Yeah. I, I don't think that he would be... Like, I'm just sort of thinking about, um, like, problems that we're facing, and how would this candidate, or how would this candidate...
I think, just based on what I see come into the inbox, just not, not all of, which is a question that I asked, but, you know, we know we have these big things that we need to address, but we also have communication issues, we also have things from the residents that come in on a daily basis. From my perspective, I think David could handle those things more effectively, just based on his experience as a police chief, because, uh, that's one aspect of that job, right? Is you have to be a pro, a crisis interventionist, essentially. So, I think he could help with those things a little better than Rob might be able to. Because when I asked Rob about that, those questions, he managed, like, mentioned, like, a ticketing system, which is great, but that's not going to address some of these challenges that, that people confront the town administrator with on a daily basis. And I, I don't think people understand how many of those come in, because unless you're actually triaging that stuff, you don't really see it. Uh, but it's a big part of the job, is being able to address residents' concerns, and I know Amanda probably knows this, because it comes into her office all the time, but that's a big part of the job, too. It's not just the, the big things. So, and we're not, from a public perception standpoint, people are not pleased with the level of service that they're getting, which is understandable, because we have an interim person right now, but that's, that's a big aspect of the job.
Right, we have total chaos right now, in my opinion, you know, with just the, the DPW director missing, and the interim, and it's just...
Well, I don't, I think chaos is a big word, because I think we've put people in those roles, but is it the same as having a full-time, consistent person? No way.
No.
It's not the same as a full-time, consistent person, but we are working towards solving those problems.
Right, yes.
I, I think they would both be...
There's no process, there's no process, and I think that David would be able to implement policy, procedure, and process based on his experience, because that's what he has had to do, um, more effectively. Rob, on the other hand, obviously understands the town challenges better, because he lives here, he's been on all of these boards, he understands the inner, he understands it from the inner workings of, um, the positions that he's served on, so I think that's an asset for him.
I think it is an, an asset for him, and the, um, the, the, I think he has a ton of experience with solving problems, and so, I think the, the problem-solving part, I think, would be a real strength for him. And I feel like the, what he told us about, this is a calling, and his commitment to the town, I don't think that was words, I think that was real. And I think that's highly motivating, and he's, and he's a highly energetic, was his word, right, um, person, and so, I think, um, I think that is a strength that he would bring to the town. But, at Da, on the David side, is super similar, like, I think David's going to be hard-working, and, um, the procedural piece that you point out, I think that's, that he said, process and procedure, I think that is something that we would really benefit from, somebody helping us tighten those things up, and, and, um, um... So, I think that's a strength that he brings, and his interest in that, and his understanding about chain of command, I think, is really interesting, um, because that's really critical for a successfully operating organization, right? People have to do their job, and, and, Bill Belichick would like that. Do your job, and he'd say, and, um, but it's true, like, do your job, and do your job, and not do somebody else's job.
I also liked what he said about, you know, he's, he has built a capital plan as police chief. He has, like, created a schedule for when equipment is going to...
That was interesting.
Become dormant, because we just dealt with that at the last town meeting, and people were asking, do we have a schedule for when this equipment is going to go, so that we can plan accordingly? So, he's done some of that, which is nice.
A lot of those things.
I don't know, I'm on the fence, as you can tell.
I, I, I think it is an, I think it is an advantage, Rob knows the players in the game, and I think he could work well with them. It would be a much, I think it would be an easier transition. I'm not saying, I'm sure Dave could come in, in his skills and everything, he could get everyone, he's a good leader, and he could get everyone to follow him. I, I just feel it would be a little easier for Rob, that he knows the players, and they know about him.
I know. I'm thinking really hard, because I have, um, usually I'm pretty intuitive about things, and I really liked both candidates, and so, I don't, it's not like there is, um, there's one over. I have concerns about, and I know that you suggested we not consider it, but I, I see the fact that he is, knows the situation and is in town, I see that as a strength and a weakness, not just a strength.
How, how do you see it as a weakness?
Because I think that it is, um... I th, I think that because of some of the challenges that we have had, there is, it's going to feel more like, oh, and, and like a status quo thing, and not as much as a growth thing. And I don't know Rob well enough to know how he'll respond to those kinds of, of, um, how he'll respond to that. So, um, I want somebody who's going to grow us, right? Who we're going to say, we're a better community, we're stronger, we're somebody who will grow us. And I think that, I loved listening to Rob talk about growing his people, no person left behind, treat people like a professional, lift people up, um, um, I, I think that those were just huge strengths for him, and, and that really made his, his candidacy compelling to me. But on David's side, he's like, we need processes and procedures, but he also was so human about, um, how we needed to treat people, and we need to celebrate their birthdays, and we need to, um, um, and he was so prepared, and he has, he has more experience. Um, I don't know.
Well, what I can say about Rob is, he's a rule follower, so, like, he's by the book, and he's not going to deviate from that, you know? So, I don't think you need to be concerned about that, um, just based on my experience.
Now, how is that any different than policies and procedures? He's saying all about procedures and policies, and how is that any different than following rules?
I didn't say it was.
Oh, okay.
I'm just trying to address that concern about the, her hesitation on them.
Yeah, I think they're true, two very strong candidates. Like, when, um, when I was principal, every time you made a decision, it would be, um, like, what is best for kids? So, you could, at, at the end of the day, it's like, what is best for kids, that's what we need to do. And so, right now, we need to say, what is best for Norfolk, right? Not who doesn't need a like, or who, but what is best for Norfolk? And if we hire, um, like, what is best for our community that will take us the furthest? And I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but that's kind of what I'm thinking about, like, what is best for Norfolk? And not just for the people in, in this building, but for all residents, what is best for Norfolk? And those are two variables, the employees, we want what's good for our employees, and we want what's good for our community.
Almost go hand in hand, but yes.
Yeah, but they're a little separate.
Yeah.
Because, because some of the challenges that we've been having, they're a little bit separate. But they do go hand in hand, because the employees, um, affect our community, right? They are, they are our government, so, um, but if anything, if I've learned anything through the academy, is these people love their jobs, and they're, they're a whole bunch of people who really are committed to the work that they're doing for Norfolk, and that's been very pleasant and exciting to see.
Kevin, what's your, what's your perspective here on these two?
They're two very strong candidates. I'm, I'm leaning more towards Rob. Just his knowledge of the town, and just himself as well, the way he was, the way he was explaining about his job, I mean, he went out into the, out into the field, and looked up at the streetlights to try to make, it's a way of problem-solving.
Yeah.
You know, in the way he, he said, he tries to take people and build them up, and takes them from an entry job up to a, up to an executive. You know, I mean, Dave sort of said the same thing as well, I mean, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think they're both great.
Right.
I think, I think Rob is more of a big-picture problem solver, like, on a strategic level, like, these are the things we need to do. I think David is more of a boots-on-the-ground problem solver, operations.
Yep.
So, they're different, they're different people.
Right, yes.
And I think they're going to bring a different skill set to the job.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I, I, I feel they'd probably both do a great job, I just feel Rob, I think Rob would be a better fit for this town, myself.
And you?
I think, I...
I know.
I'm torn, because one of the things that, that David said about hiring stuck with me, because it's what I do when I hire people, is I look at the person, and I just think he would be...
Hire good people, good person, he's good people.
Yes.
Well, they both are.
But that, that doesn't necessarily mean he's best for the town, though, even though I, I think he would be a great asset.
Oh, there's no, I agree with...
I think he would bring a lot to, to this town around the policy and procedure, the tactical, but I think for the problems that we need to solve as a town, the big problems, Rob is probably a better candidate to help with that.
You think better vision than David?
Yes, I think of better vision.
I think it speaks, if you look at David's resume, it speaks a lot that he was the assistant this, and then they brought him up to this. Like, he earns people's respect as he go, oh, and now can you also be town, oh, can you also be fire chief? Like, people trust him, and the town leaned on, leaned on him really hard, and, um, um, I, I think, like, I think Mendon is better, because he was there, right? Like, I think that that's real. Now, um, does that preclude that Rob couldn't do that same kind of thing? I think that, um, the, the path, the path of David's skills, like, first he did this, and then those people liked him so much, they made him this, and they liked him so much, they made him, next thing, he's assistant town manager, so I think that really speaks quite...
But that speaks to his capability, that doesn't speak to...
His vision.
The vision and the challenge, the, the challenges that we face. Could he get there in 10 years? We don't have that kind of time, like, we, we need to move these things now. We need somebody who has a growth mindset now.
Oh, that's somebody at the door.
So, that's my only...
One of the candidates coming back to shift they could hire.
So, that's my only thing on that.
I don't know, I think that David saw problems and fixed them. He, he built the capital plan for the police department, he saw the budget was a mess, he did that, I, I, um...
The other thing is, we know Rob's not going anywhere. I mean, he's healing, he's hopefully, right? And we're looking for someone for the long...
And I think that's a plus, we want stability, and someone that's going to stay here.
It is a plus, it absolutely is a plus.
But I don't think David would necessarily leave, because just based on his track record, he's not going to.
No, 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 right, yes, yes, right, yeah. He definitely proves he's in for the long haul as well.
So, I guess we have to go back to, what is best for the town, based on, going back to that profile, the challenges that we face, who can do the job better on day one? Because they both have the skills to be able to do the job.
I think that they would both do well for the town. I, I don't think there's a bad choice in front of us.
No.
So, that is, thank you, thank you, I don't think there's a bad choice.
Thank you, committee.
In front of us.
Thanks, committee. So, Kevin, you're, you're leaning towards Rob, you said?
And you were leaning towards Rob as well?
I'm, I'm right on the fence. I can see, I'm trying to see, um, I have, I have confidence in both of their abilities to solve problems for our community, to invest, like, both of these people are going to put time and energy into Norfolk, both of these people are in for the long haul, both of these people are, are like, good people, who are going to treat people with respect, and who are, um, so, they both check all of those... So they both check all of those boxes.
Yep.
And so if we're looking at those kind of boxes, they both check. They both have kind of a... I felt like when Rob talked about this being a calling for him, and I felt like that was real. But David, it felt a little like he's done his research so much, he's invested a lot in our town, and he's not even here, right? Like, so I think those check boxes. David has more experience directly related to municipal, like, unequivocally more experience that's more relatable. Rob has experience and also connections that could benefit the community, right? So he has different level of experience. We didn't actually... Did we ask him about grant writing?
I don't think we asked him.
David? No. David, we did. Rob, I don't think we asked him.
No. I mean, but he has experience working for the state, so he knows the levers that enable him to engage with them.
David has the tenacity to say, "We need an earmark, we need an earmark. How come Rentham is getting all the earmarks?" Financially, is one stronger than the other? No.
No.
Well, has Rob built a budget?
Well, he has served as chief of staff.
So he's seeing the budget.
Right.
Well, I mean, I liked what Rob said about, like, for instance, we have to solve for the dry county problem. Like, he understands the problems that we face.
We face.
So the question, I guess, I feel like we have two candidates who could do good work for us. The question is, if we could look forward in time, five years from now, which candidate will have grown us to... Will have done that work to grow us to a new place?
I don't think any of us can predict the future.
Well, I mean, I think that Rob would be a better candidate in that sense. He's more of a big thinker. He... Like, this is what he does. He is a strategy ops person. And that's part of what we need, because he mentioned, you know, the town center, like, it needs to be developed, we need to focus on...
And he mentioned the three and the five-year plan and everything. They need to... We need to develop that and follow it.
Right. I think he lacks a little bit on the day-to-day operations piece, where I think David would excel more in that area.
Right, yes.
But if you're asking me who's going to get us...
To where we need to be, the quickest.
Exactly. Then I think it's Rob, from my perspective.
And I agree with that.
And I don't think that you should be concerned about the fact that he's a town resident. I just... I don't think we're going to have any problems on that front with him. He's a by-the-book type of person.
Right.
I feel like there's two strong candidates. I want to... I guess I want to choose Rob, because the intuitive part of me, I want... That's the person I would like to choose. I have some undefined misgivings about possible problems that aren't real, right? That, to your point. And if we separate that out, if I take those, "You live in town, and you have a history with these people, and can you lead the people you have a history with?" If I take that out, I think that his vision and his energy is going to be really good for the town. His energy's the wrong word, passion. Though I'm looking at the word energetic that he said. So the passion that he has...
Well, it seems like we all came to a decision.
I don't know.
Can we hire David for something else?
You said you wanted to get an assistant town administrator, and he's good at human resource, so, I mean...
I don't think he's going to go from police chief to assistant town administrator.
You don't know. He said he's looking for a change. He likes the town in Norfolk, so you could.
I guess I like them both. I want to choose Rob, and I have some misgivings, but I think that he would partner with us to be successful.
Yes, I agree.
I agree. And based on my experience with him, I don't have those concerns. So hopefully, we won't have to worry about that.
All right.
Okay.
Are we good?
We are.
We're good.
Please be sure...
We have a motion.
I know, I have it right here.
Okay.
I'm just going slow here, because I'm wrapping my head around it. First of all, thank you to our screening committee. I'm just so impressed with the candidates in front of us, and thank you. So thank you so, very, very much, for the work that you've done for our community. It really does matter, and the process really does matter, right? We let the community have their say, and I think that that really matters. So thank you very, very much. Second of all, thank you for the roles that you played in bringing us strong candidates, and I'm grateful for...
We're sorry for making your decision.
So hard, because I'm sad. I feel like there's a loss, because I'm quite impressed with David, but I feel like I'm believing in Rob's calling, and I think it's real. And I feel like... I think it's real. So...
And it's unanimous.
And it's unanimous, which is what I was hoping to have, unanimous coming from this. So I'm going to... I will accept a motion to authorize Municipal Resources Incorporated to make a conditional offer of employment to Robert J. Garrity for the position of Norfolk Town Administrator. This offer is conditioned upon the satisfactory background review investigation conducted by Municipal Resources Incorporated, physical exam if required, and the successful negotiation of the terms of appointment by the select board.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Kevin O'Jai.
Oh, no, we're not in the executive session. We can just say aye.
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 There we go.
And please, the staff...
Yes.
They did a wonderful job. They need to be acknowledged, too.
Amanda and Judith are rock stars.
Thank you.
Rock stars. 100% rock stars.
And Judith, wherever you are.
Just a couple of comments on what you just voted on.
Yes.
So we will make the offer, and we will talk to the individual about getting us some information, detailed information, because our background investigation takes 10 days to two weeks. It's intensive.
Wow, two weeks, two and a half weeks.
Yeah, it's intensive. We go into the financial background of the individual, and they got to sign releases so it can get into bank accounts and all that. So... And then we talk to some folks. So you'll have... It goes to you, that background check. It's, like I said, it's fairly extensive. We've been pretty successful in not getting anybody disqualified, because we do preliminary work on all these candidates. So we know a lot about them, not everything, not the real detail. In the interim, you ought to think about designating either your full board or a member to start talking about a contract.
Can... I have that paperwork here, too, don't I? Didn't I see that motion here, too, to designate... Can I... Can we designate me to do that, and I'll do that in partnership with Mike? Mike has offered to be...
Mike certainly knows contracts.
So do we need to take official action on that, or is that something... We're meeting on...
I think they should, take an official vote to designate somebody.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Is it on there, or man?
Yes, it is.
Well, it's kind of here.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. So is it okay if it's me? Are you okay if I partner with Mike on that?
Yeah.
So I would accept a motion to allow the chair to enter into negotiations for the hiring of Michael Garrity, subject to the full approval of the board. And there we go.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It doesn't have a signature.
What's...
Mine. Sorry.
Do we need to sign it?
We could adjourn?
We can do that after.
Or we could hang out? If we haven't spent that much time together, we could hang out.
Yeah, we're...
Oh, Andrew wants to go home.
We're ten minutes shy of four hours, so, yeah.
Our attendees here want to go home.
To go home. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.